Welcome folks, both live and remote. I'm going to open the town council subcommittee meeting in public forum at approximately 6:04 PM. And I would ask everybody to stand and enjoy the game of flag allegiance.
Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm Mike McLean, I am current chair of council in Wakefield. We have, as some of you may know, if you don't have discussed through the meeting, but I'm gonna try to be brief in my comments so we can get to the presentation and public questioning as well, because that's really the focus of this. We have in the town council set up a three-member subcommittee to deal with the next diversion of MBTA, excuse me, MBTA communities, section forty-eight, our general laws, chapter forty, section three A. The subcommittee is comprised of myself, Councilor Robert Vincent, and Councilor Adam Drowsky, who I believe has other commitments now. Basically, if you, and I know many of you have, this has been a very interesting issue throughout town in the last cycle. If you follow the fire working group, there was always a statement that, well, the fallback is going to be for the fall town meeting. So the fact that I happened to personally oppose the spring proposals, as did a majority of the folks at that town meeting, that doesn't mean that we're not considering, which we are considering, but in a different way. And that's why we're having public comments, to have all of your input as much as we can. I'm kind of a short timeframe. Thank you all very much for taking part of your summer for this, because we are in that timeframe, we've got a couple of meetings, I don't know if you've all seen them, but we've got one issue meetings on a weekly basis. We're trying to do a number of public forums as well, at least a couple. That doesn't mean this won't go to the planning board, it's gonna follow similar procedures. We'll go to the planning board and they will then have their public meetings, which maybe was attended last time around for the spring, prior to the spring town meeting. So we're in a tight timeframe, we're trying to do as much outreach as we can, as quickly as we can. I'm told that we haven't had time to compile the survey results, but they are pouring it. We are at seven hundred or so surveys in a very short period of time on return. Just a couple of basics, because I've noticed that a couple of neighbors have kind of misunderstood the circles we're gonna be looking at tonight. First thing to think about is, there is no plan. This is the start of a process to come to a plan. So what we have under MBTA communities is three circles. The circles are around train stations. They're approximately five hundred acres, they're half mile radius. They are around Wakefield Station, they're around Greenwood, and we have a piece that goes from Melrose Highlands into the southern part of Green. So we may have eleven, twelve hundred acres altogether, I haven't counted, don't quote me on the exact amount, but there's a lot of acreage, just because your house or your building or your property is within one of those circles, doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna be part of what this ultimate the plan is. For example, the plan last time, I think the larger plan was about a hundred forty-two acres out of the five hundred, all in the Wakefield Station circle. We also have possible option to have up to, and Samantha Elliott, our planner, talking to Samantha, and welcome Steve Mayo, our former expert. Samantha will also talk about how there is the prospect of also considering up to twenty-five percent outside of those circles, in a different area. That's outside of the five hundred acre circles that we're starting. You are, if you're remote tonight, you're unmuted, there's two reasons for that. One is background noise, the other is, there is, I got a new thing in my vocabulary yesterday, it's called a zulabond. So you can occasionally have somebody come into a meeting like this and find all kinds of, you know, consternation and disruption. Our town administrator is well able to take care of that if it happens.
Well, I don't know, I'm learning. I'll be better than that.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll do the best we can. But that's where you're muted, so if we get to the Q and A session in your remote, please use that raise your hand button if you get to that point and you wanna come up to me and ask a question or make a comment or whichever. Beyond that, we're also, you know, I think the prior plan was virtually one hundred percent residential. We want to know with feedback whether, if there's an alternative plan proposed, whether that might be different, whether it might contain some commercial, as well as residential, my own personal preference is as little residential as possible. I'm only one person and we wanna know what you all think. So now I'm going to turn it over to our senior player Samantha Elliott, so she can go through some of these slides. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, please remember to silence your phones. If you want a copy of the PowerPoint, there are copies up at the little front table. There's also a copy of the survey, if you haven't had an opportunity to take it online or to grab one of the copies that we have at those four different locations around town. So if you're ready to grab one, then you can drop it on the box on your way out. So, excuse me, the goal of today's forum is to collaborate with you. We're not here to tell you what to do or what's going to happen. We're here to gain some clarity, get some more additional information, make sure that we have all of the facts straight, so that we can start working on going forward with a new plan. We're looking to gain guidance on a new map, the different locations that you want to have us look at. If off-site is desired, which means outside of the location areas, I'll go into detail, the station location areas, and I'll go into detail on that a little bit later. And if there's support for character areas, so we could have a variety of different densities or heights, and I will also go into detail on that a little bit later. So if you haven't heard, MBTA communities is within chapter forty-eight of Massachusetts law. And it is section three A, Massachusetts communities that are certified in CCA. The requirement is to create a small district for many multi-unit, multi-family transit oriented development by rights. Typically, they are around train stations, subway stations, train as in commuter rail, subway stations or a bus station. A minimum of fifteen acres per unit. And there cannot be any age restrictions, and it needs to be suitable for families with children. And that is based off of fair housing laws, that is nothing specific to Massachusetts, it's a federal law. Within Wakefield, we are considered a commuter rail community. That, the state parameters that we have, that we are required to create a district within, that we need to have a certain minimum of thirty-six acres, a minimum of one thousand six hundred ninety-six potential units, does not necessarily mean they're going to be built. Fifteen units per acre is the minimum, and seventy-five percent of that district needs to be within the station areas. So up to twenty-five percent can be located offsite, so somewhere else around Wakefield. From spring two thousand four, two thousand twenty-four, sorry, that would have been years ago, not right now. Anyway, the process that y'all went through included public meetings, surveys, forums, lots of presentations, feedback and a variety of different maps that went out. On the warrant, there were variations created by the planning board, as well as the citizens petition, and ultimately, the town voted down all of the proposals. That was one of the previous proposals. What we learned from that, we want to make sure that we are getting new information from you as a public, make sure that we are having a variety of different meetings, again, surveys, forums, to gain more knowledge on what it is that you're looking for. We need to be looking at a new district and bylaw, so what you voted on were specific bylaws in districts and maps, not whether or not you wanna comply with MBTA communities law. That is not what was up for vote. So we heard a lot that the area needed to be reduced, try to get as close to the minimum as possible, and the minimum number of potential units, and it needs to be spread out, if possible, through the various station areas. So we went back and wanted to start looking at what that would look like in Wakefield for this fall two thousand twenty-four iteration. So we'll be looking at the zoning, the potential of character areas, looking at heights and densities as well, opening everything up and starting from the beginning all over again. So what happens if we don't comply? Whether you're aware or not, the, our current and future grant funding is at risk if we don't comply. The town may also be sued by the attorney general. They have actually started legal action on other communities that have not complied. And they won't be heard, I believe, until October at the earliest. Milton, I believe, is supposed to be heard in October, and they could end up being forced to comply in the end. We also have received a large number of grants over the past three years, about three point seven million dollars. And these are some of the grants that would be at risk. In two thousand twenty-three, an additional list was provided of more grants. Most municipalities around the country rely on grants, have legal projects, proposals, or post different things that could be impacted, meaning they might not be done, or we would need to come up with other funding sources. Back to what we're gonna be doing here. Right now, we have a town council subcommittee, and we're going to be raising the townspeople, the public, which is called that we're here, to review the potential zoning bylaw that would be in the areas for MBTA communities, look at potential character areas, which again, I'll get into in a couple of slides, and also look at height and density, so that we can figure out how to get as close to meeting the state minimums in a new bylaw. So if you don't know what is zoning, zoning regulates use, it regulates height, density setbacks, spacing, capacity, providing, excuse me, provides company rules for issues, so potential, commercial, industrial, et cetera, helping to regulate the town. What is density? So this is a really great tool, if you don't know what density is, what density is around your house, or you're just curious, or in a certain part of town. This is from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, and it was called Resid Density. I'm happy to send the link if anybody wants to go look at it, you're also welcome to Google it. This is just downtown, so the darker the color, the more density it is. So density talks about the units per acre, so how concentrated it is. So this is a snapshot of the little downtown area that is highlighted here. And you can see there's an average, based on different uses, whether it's condo or two-family, the average density per parcel. And it gives you a breakdown in the area, so if you're ever curious on what existing areas, or the areas that we're looking at, it's a great tool to use. So something else that we've talked about a little bit is zoning capacity. So that's not the requirement, it's of what's going to be on that property. It's not a mandate for what's going to be built, it's the potential. So if you have a single family structure and it has the potential of having a four unit on that lot, if you meet all of the other zoning requirements, then that would be the capacity. Just like here, it talks about a two unit. And then if it were undeveloped, it would potentially do a four unit there, doesn't mean it's gonna be developed, doesn't mean anything is going to be demolished, it's just the potential of it. So another thing I wanna make sure we're clear on is what mixed uses is. Councilor McLean talked about it earlier. So you have commercial on the first floor, and then you would have residential on second, third, fourth, fifth, depending on how high the building is. It allows for a variety of uses, and it also helps to keep that first floor online. So if you're walking along, out the end, if you didn't have all those shops, it would have a very different feel, and it would change that character of the area. So this also allows people to live, work and play in the same areas. It's neighborhood supporting, meaning that these businesses are typically supporting the people who live in these units above and in the surrounding area, and so it reduces the dependence on cars. You could walk to a restaurant, you could walk to a grocery store, or a dry cleaner, or even a daycare, and not have to ever get in a car. Many times, they're also found in commercial centers or commercial nodes, excuse me. So they're typically transit oriented. And as for multi-family, these are the number of units that you would find under one roof. So a single family would be one, multi-family could be two, three, four, five, six, or higher if it is a larger building. But again, no matter what is going on, the development would always be required to meet the underlying zoning requirements, unless it's granted, leave through a public hearing process. Right now, in Wakefield, there are a number of different zoning districts, which is G R, which is general residential, excuse, neighborhood business and business, that all permit two-family by rights. There's already a number of different places where multi-unit development can happen. However, MBTA communities requiring at least three families, three unit or higher buildings, and so that's what is currently permitted by special permit within Wakefield. So this is a good example of a couple of different things. It's not only talking about, you know, how, so this is the type of housing that would be mostly permitted, except for this one, by MBTA communities, even all the way up to this. Now, this is not saying it has to be built, this is the potential of what could happen. It is up to you, the townspeople, to say, here's what we want, here's what we don't want, and we will be, meaning me, staff will create a bylaw to respect that. One other thing we can do is residential, as I had mentioned before, are character areas. So you could have a commercial character area where you would have all mixed use, so you'd have commercial down here, with residential on top. And then this would be higher density residential, all the way down to a lighter density residential. And they're all different ways to maintain the character and look at vision of an area, so it's kind of alluding to this. Character areas are something that are very common in not just the MBTA communities, but in other zoning overlay areas. They allow you to create a vision for what you want, so if you have an area that is developed as opposites, you would maintain that character, so you would maintain that use. And you'd have, you can have different setbacks, you can have different parking requirements, signage, height, I mean, it's fairly limitless. You just don't explicitly regulate use as part of that character area component. But they would allow you to create, like if you wanted to have Foundry Street be similar to what is currently going on there with five-plus story buildings, five and six, I think, the, then that would be a higher density commercial area, all up and down North Ag, you have primarily commercial uses that are currently one-story, but you could potentially have mixed-use building, you could have a mixed-use neighborhood, commercial character area there. It's a way to allow you to not have one blanketed district, which is what we had last time, and allow you to have a little bit more, you as the townspeople, or you to have a little bit more say in the various types of development and various densities that are part of this district. So the three station areas that we have for MBTA communities are Wakefield Station, Greenwood Station, and then a portion, right here is the line for Wakefield, so it's this section right here of Melrose Highlands. So about seventy-five percent of the total acreage and units needs to be located within one of these three areas. To get further into the weeds, fifty percent of it technically needs to be contiguous. So those are the two biggest challenges that we face in trying to find a district that works, both for the town and still meets the intent of the law. Foundry Street is one area that currently has a higher density, is what I was talking about with the character area. You could potentially even pull out this section and have a different density here. This section, I believe, is out, it's of the watershed, but the north of this line right here would be permitted to be, as an idea, not telling you at all what to do, but just to help you as a group think about what it is that you wanna see in Wakefield. Another potential commercial neighborhood character area that you could do with mixed use would be Greenwood. And so you have the station right where the shot is, you have Main Street, and you could potentially do some variation of this area, that the lines are just to help you to see what the existing commercial developments are. But that is another potential of an area that you could look at as part of this second iteration. So some offsite areas, this McLean had brought it up earlier, that twenty-five, up to twenty-five percent of the district, which is nine acres, can be located at one of these offsite, non-stationary areas. There would be restrictions still based off of watershed and a variety of other excluded components. However, they are three areas that have been identified as having the potential for a minimum or being capable of meeting that nine acre offsite area. So there's Salem Street over on the east side of Wakefield, Aldavon Road, which is north of ninety-five, and Quantapowett Parkway, which is where there's a development currently going on right here at two hundred Quantapowett. So, we are going to open it up, if you have any questions. Talk too fast, and you can get back up or anything, just let me know, otherwise, we're happy to open up some public comments. Could you do me a favor and state your name?
Oh, sure, Bill Tubbs. The, use Quantapowett as an example, the construction that's going on there right now, is that something that can be included in the state, within the state mandate? Or this has had to be all new construction?
So we're not mandated to build anything. Whatever gets approved is not a mandate to build anything. It's, it allows that to be done in the future, should somebody want to, should the numbers actually work out. In a lot of cases, that's very convoluted and would be a whole separate meeting as to whether or not numbers actually work out financially for developer and a specific site.
Let's say, in order to comply with the law.
You could, you could utilize that area and get close to, I think, it's around four hundred units that you can get within the nine acre offsite area, and utilize that as part of one of the districts. The, what MBTA community is looking at is what is the potential development, not what is existing. So let's say the existing was three hundred, but we could do up to four hundred in this site. It doesn't matter what is existing or what they're building. It still has the potential under the bylaw, if written that way, obviously, that you could do up to four hundred units. Does that make sense?
If the question was, can we count the ones that they're building right now, the answer, the answer is no.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that, I think the question was more like, can we count what they're building right now?
The count of the
They don't count towards this.
The count of the units wouldn't make a difference here, because they're not actually looking at actually units built. They're looking at what the potential is. So if that site has the potential, even though it's already developed, of adding four hundred units, that could qualify for meeting the minimum criteria of MBTA communities, even if it's not actually going to be built, because there's already a project going on there currently. Does that make sense?
I think so.
They're not, they're not going to, we don't actually have to provide one thousand six hundred ninety-six units. We have to show that there are spots in town, should the numbers work for somebody, which is a very, again, very convoluted process. You have to show that there is the potential for that. And the vast majority of the time, there's so many different factors that go into it, it may or may not actually ever be able to be built.
Can I just tell, if you don't mind, if you might?
No, 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 no.
I think the way to think about it is that, think about the new condos on Foundry Street. Can we put that, that section up there again? Okay, so, Foundry Street, okay, Foundry Street. There are already units built there, right? This couple, there's one being built right now, you can see D B A Z sign on it when you buy the train, and the other two. So if you included that in our, let's say we included that in our new area for compliance with the state, okay? No one is gonna buy that and knock those units down to build more, to build, to build less units, right? But we'll get credit for those units going towards what the state wants to get. So it's really a way of creating compliance with what the law says. Because I've said this before, and I believe this, the bylaw that we passed, I think in two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteen, was way better than what the state had, special permit issues, it had, you know, Z B A did a great job, you can agree or disagree with the, with the projects, but they had to go through more of a robust hearing. So I think that's kind of the way we thought about, why can't we, because people have asked, why can't you get credit for this? Why can't you get credit for that? Well, we can't for what's already built, we can get credit for including that area in the zone, okay? And it's very, it's very strange.
Can I follow that too, Steve? So I was told months ago that we could potentially get credit for four hundred units on Foundry Street. They don't exist. I don't think the middle of Foundry Street, I don't think anybody in the room would doubt that that's going to be developed, or is very likely to be developed. So I was puzzled over why we wouldn't include that. Because the builder would then basically have two choices. Go on eighteen percent affordability under recurrent special permit district, or go under forty-eight, section three eight. And one thing I'd point out is when, if we do a plan that has more density, the larger buildings, in other words, the prior plan did not have any affordable possibilities, because you were changing two family to a three family or a four family, where's your ten percent? We may, if we do it this way, also, if someone chose to go under the forty-eight, section three eight, we may be able to require ten percent. So they'd be choosing between Z B A and eighteen percent, you know, for various reasons, right? I mean, I don't know which, which they would come up with.
They wouldn't be able to utilize eighteen percent.
They would, okay, but we might be able to get the ten percent.
But, right, no, we can, we can get the ten percent without having to go through anything. It's, it would just be a wash, so it would allow us to maintain our existing S H I, which is the standard subsidized housing inventory list. It would allow us to maintain that, which gets us closer towards being able to have a little bit more say in communities around the town.
It's been a problem throughout, yes.
Huge, and Emerson Street. So just trying to understand exactly what you're saying. So if the goal to meet the minimum requirement is thirty-six acres and seventeen hundred units, why can't we count like the current areas?
So we, we can, and we can't, we don't, they're not looking for a specific number of units, like this, this building is built, and so it has three hundred units, and so that's gonna count in our bucket. But that's not what they're looking at, they're looking at the potential of what could be there.
Okay.
Right, but they, we don't have to build any of the units. So if we put that sixteen ninety-six number in, and then we have four hundred, that could potentially go in Foundry, but Foundry's completely built out, it's a plan in the future. It's, it doesn't really make a difference, they're not looking to have those units built, if that makes sense.
We're not gonna get credit for units that are already built under a different process. I'm gonna, can we jump to someone online?
Sure.
So I have Julie online, let me see if I can do this right. I think Julie can unmute herself now, I believe.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Julie Scott for Central Street Wakefield. I've got a couple of questions, I'll say my questions, and then I'll get off, so you guys can answer them. So my first question is for Sam Elliott. The IP address, when I took my survey, the town hall must have been able to read my IP address, because I wanted a friend of mine who lives in Wakefield to use my computer to take the survey as well, and they couldn't access the survey. So if that could be looked at, so perhaps a husband and wife living in the same home could both have access to the survey using the same computer. In the item, it did not specify that they were paper copies. That part of the article that's, that's in the survey was not submitted as part of what was submitted to the item, so maybe you might wanna give a thought to have the item reprint, the article, but include where paper copies can go. And if, where paper copies can be.
Yeah.
And also, if people were to take the paper copy home to fill it out, explain how they can drop it off to you.
It's in the instructions on the manual, or do you want that explained somewhere else?
If it was not in the library, so I wanted to take the copy with me, so, and I didn't see it in what the Wakefield Daily Item printed. So I'm assuming I bring it to town hall, but I would know where to send it, because I know who works there, but some people might not know where to, where to deliver it to.
It's on the survey itself.
I do know that some people in the community on Facebook had stated that they were concerned about privacy. A number of years ago, the school committee did a survey, and they, the people who took the survey lost their privacy. So I think there are members of the community who would like to be reassured that their privacy will be maintained. What I questioned about the survey was, I don't know how you would know it's just Wakefield residents taking the survey? There could be developers outside of Wakefield taking the survey? How do we know that, or is it even important, that we know that these are Wakefield residents taking the survey and not other interested parties? So that's my first question. Do you want me to keep going, and I'll just sign off, and you guys can answer?
I can answer that one quickly, I, I don't know that we do know. Right now, it's set up as an anonymous survey to be able to protect people's privacy. In order to set up an anonymous survey, you have to tie it to an IP address. That's the way the survey software is set up. The other alternative, if you wanna make sure that someone's not taking it more than once, is to utilize your name, your contact information, email address, et cetera. And if people want to be able to have an anonymous survey, we can't have both. So it was set up to be anonymous, it is tied to an IP address. If somebody else wants to fill it out, they can either get a paper copy from the four different locations where they are around town. Or they can, they're more than welcome to contact me, I'm happy to help with getting a survey as well. Or you can utilize your cellphone. Or they can, they're more than welcome to contact me. I'm happy to help with getting a, a survey as well. Or you can utilize your cell phone network. Yes, it is attached to an IP address, as far as I know.
Okay, thank you. Now, my next question or questions would be for probably Steve Mayo and any of the planning board members who are online. I'm thinking about imbalances and I'm thinking about the quality of life and character of our community in Wakefield. There are three hundred fifty-one municipalities in Massachusetts. One hundred seventy-seven are mandated to do what we're talking about tonight under the three A communities law. So that means one hundred seventy-four communities will have access to grants with no problems at all. Don't have to jump over the hurdles that we have to jump over. Boston is exempt from this law. I'm concerned about the ease of access to grants. I heard what you said at the beginning of the, of the meeting tonight. But there will be no retribution for the other communities in Massachusetts, and that concerns me. That's an imbalance of power. It seems like they, living far away, by virtue of where they live, have more power and access to our tax dollars, which concerns me. And I know you can't do anything about that, but we still have to respond to the mandate. I'm worried about the local planning boards and the Z B As, how they will be burdened with all of these state changes. So I'm assuming, and maybe I'm wrong, that the state will be taking over the jobs of the Z B As and the planning boards for the neighborhoods that will be affected by this mandate. The boards, I'm wondering if the state will require a new land court system where hearings will be ho- held. Will a new court system have to be created? Will building inspectors be overseeing these zones? Or will now the state be taking over the role of building inspectors as well? Because these will be state-run zoned areas. Is it going to be looked at differently? For example, if you have a caper, now I don't know where these zones are, so let me just pick two zones that are far from each other. Let's say you have a caper built in nineteen fifty-two on Walton Street, which is on the Wakefield infield line. And you have pretty much the exact same caper on Pine Hill Circle, built in nineteen fifty-two, and they're identical. But they're in different districts. One may be in the overlay, the MBTA three A district. How will the person living in the MBTA district have to do things differently than the person who owns the same type of house but lives in the other part of the community? How will they go about the building process, the permitting process, the appeals process? Who will be in charge of that? Who will incur more cost? Will it be the person who's having to deal with these state rules and regulations? Or would it be the resident who can simply appeal to their local planning board and local Z B A? Might somebody in the district have to hire a lawyer and go into Boston? Who will be guiding these people when they want to develop their home and their land? Will they need to go to an office in Boston? Or will they be continuing to use our town hall and its offices? And then I have one more question after that.
I'll, I'll take those. Thank you.
Hi, Steve. I made it easy for you.
Oh, well, thank you. You always do. A lot of those issues, as far as the issue regarding areas in state that are not under this mandate, I think those are great questions for your state delegation who voted for this. None of your town council voted for this. Anybody in, in the town of Wakefield voted for it. As far as your question regarding what would happen to a homeowner, A, they don't have to do anything to start, okay? If a homeowner that was in the district, assuming one gets passed, wanted to convert their, you know, two family into a another multifamily because they were in this overlay district, that, that would all be handled by our Board of Appeals. Just like it is now if you're in a district where you have a one family that you could convert to a two family. I've heard nothing about any state overseeing Zar that's gonna look at these things at all. So I think that it would, it would remain local, and what we're doing is we're, we're voting to adopt an overlay district just like the overlay district we have adopted in two thousand fifteen. All of those property owners went to the Board of Appeals in Wakefield, and they had to go through a hearing process. They are probably better off hiring a lawyer, but you don't have to. But you also don't have to take advantage of this if you wanted to at all. So I, I've heard nothing about a, a big state overseer looking at this under this program. And I think I'll be happy, Julie, to talk to you offline on these, let's, all the people, if that's okay.
Yep, I just consider that some, some people will have more red tape to deal with than others. And I hope that some of the town leaders that are on this call, this meeting right now, will reach out to our town leaders about this. Thank you.
One quick thing to add, some clarification too, is that the MBTA communities actually have multiple grant programs that will be dedicated to those past MBTA community regulations. It is not just that they have that same pool of money. There is a dedicated pool of money that is coming up. The state is already hiring a separate planner to deal with this grant money and administration of the MBTA community. You're more than welcome to go find the listing on the site if anybody wants to apply for it. And that's just one thing, quick thing I wanted to add.
Like, it's okay, why don't I go one here and one online? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
I think you had your hand up.
Yes, I did. Hi, I'm Eva Arbuckle. This is my brother and sister-in-law who live right next door in a three-family on Emerson. We bought the house next door on Emerson. That was originally a two-family that we converted into a one-family. We had to fight tooth and nail to get it zoned as a one-family, F Y I. So essentially, we moved here because I thought, one, we're gonna get a good bang for our buck because we're right next to the MBTA. We're obviously a younger couple, so unlike the, I would say, fifty plus.
You can say me, unlike.
Yeah, like, unlike my neighbor here, Jimmy, who's in the fifty-plus community who's lived here. No, I'm, I'm getting a point across because I feel some of the millennials aren't really being heard, and I wanna be the voice. That, you know, we worked hard to get into this community, and I wanted to come to this community from Arlington. That's where I grew up. Could've stayed in Arlington, but this was more affordable for a millennial like myself to move out here. So I'm very concerned because we are in the area that supposedly we were gonna make like, you know, a quick buck down the road. Twenty, thirty years, this is always gonna be a good area that people wanna commute to. So I'm a little concerned at the fact that, like, we've gotta know communication about this. I mean, we've lived here for a year and a half. We had no idea this was even going on until I saw this guy up on the stage and you, and you in May. And I had to literally round the troops in our entire district. We had no idea this was even happening. Like, that's a big, big concern for somebody who pays, how much do we pay a month in mortgage? I don't even wanna say. Like, that's a very big concern that nobody knows about this. That's an issue, one, right off the bat. Two, from every documentation that I've read thus far, it basically said that seventy-five percent of it was supposed to be in our district. Is that still the case or no?
In the station area, yes.
Okay, so we can be in Greenwood, we can be in Melrose. So how about this?
The only thing that ends up coming up with having to be in one area is that we need to have a portion of it that's contiguous. Which means it has to be connected. So fifty percent of the overall space has to be all attached.
Okay, so, and this is just an outside, we're looking in now, having lived in the community. Actually, the biggest asset we have in this community is our lake. The downtown is in need of a dire repair. And there was actually probably a strip of land from that border Boston that I know the owners of that building, like toxic waste back there. The town wants them to knock it down anyway. Why don't you build mixed use, boost the economy, clean up the town so that actual millennials wanna live here and run it all the way to Greenwood? And we can, like, make a change here and get out of our area that is already in infiltrated with three families, two families, and, no, Lynn, and I know it's like, oh, we're not talking about what's gonna go there today. Yeah, that, it doesn't matter about what's gonna go there today. It's about the future and our assets being on the line, that, that is an issue. The assets that we've worked hard to get to, and we didn't, you know, we need an affordable housing. We worked hard to get to this area. And if you can't afford it, I think, hey, ho, go to New Hampshire then. Go, go to Kentucky.
As a side note, just so you know, what affordable housing means here is that it's eighty percent A M I, which means somebody who's making ninety-one thousand dollars.
Yes, I'm very aware of what affordable housing.
Just letting you know what our number is.
Yeah, no, I'm very aware.
You know, to, to answer your question, I've been here thirty-four years. You have the same power, well, I always said this, the first year I got here, that anybody that's been here thirty-four years. I've already indicated, and this also responds to Julie's question, that I really don't want this anywhere residential, if we can make it work that way. So if your concern is our neighborhoods, I thought that the prior plan actually would take away some of these houses you're talking about. Because all of a sudden, you know, our, our most affordable houses are probably like your Sixth Street, one, you know, similar area to what you're talking about. And, and that's our most affordable, and those are not really affordable anymore. But that's, that's our base. And we would have been taking a lot of those and potentially turning, in my opinion, turning us into a, or turning us into another town.
Yeah.
So we're trying to come up with a different plan, and we're trying to get the public into whether if Foundry's gonna be developed anyway, maybe we put four hundred units over there. That's a great kickoff. That's a great start. That doesn't touch residential. If we pick an outside area, maybe Audubon. Right? We've got a, then just through down there, if we could take twenty-five percent, it's, that's about nine acres, I think. And we go over there. We try to stay to the minimum of thirty-six acres. But, for example, when I, I take the train, imagine that. And when I'm standing there at Wakefield Station, I'm looking out at Tonal Building down there, larger building there, condo building on Albion Street, five stories. Maybe if we wanna preserve the shops, maybe we consider doing a different type of situation here where we require, if anybody does this, they don't have to, where we require the mixed use, where we retain the retail on the first floor. So those are just some ideas we're trying to get from you folks. We're not here to fight you. I will say, though, I went to, like, thirty meetings, watched thirty meetings of the prior working group and did attend both public meetings and attended another meeting where I think I was the only public participation that ever happened in their meetings. It's not hidden, but it's very hard to hit everybody, right? I mean, we're working this as a part-time one-page job, so I'm not gonna knock on a thousand doors. But we've already got seven hundred surveys. It's a high issue in town, and it's getting well-vetted now. So tell the person who doesn't know. Everybody in this room tells the person who doesn't know about it. That's what we want. We want public participation. We want to do that. We wanna know where you want us to go with this. And we've all said it on the sub, so, well, Vincent, Mr. or Kelsor Nigroski, we've all said we want the minimum, also the minimums we can get. And we've all said, if it doesn't pass it, tell me we're not falling on our swords. I mean, to me, local control is the oxymoron of the twenty-twenty's. We really don't have a heck of a lot of local control. We gotta deal with forty A, we gotta deal with forty B, which works against Fortnite. We've gotta, we've gotta fight buildings on the Han Street at the same time that Kamala just tells us, don't, don't, don't. No matter what we do. We go from six point eight percent two years ago when I first got involved in this because of the growth, to eight point nine percent now. We're gonna make it ten percent. Probably sometime this decade on forty B, and we can finally have a little more control. Listen, until we lose it after the next census. So this is all a lot of moving parts. We're all trying to get the feedback, but I hear it, and in fact, I agree with you. That's why I voted against all three proposals at the spring town meeting. That's why we're here now, because of majority tip.
I appreciate that, honestly.
The other thing about why we're here now is, in twenty twenty-two, there was an MBTA forty-three subcommittee working group put together. They had a member of the town council, members of the planning board, Z B A, and others. They were extremely diligent. They had a lot of hearings. They had a lot of public hearings. There was notice about that. And then, of course, the planning board also played a prominent role. But as Chair McLean indicated, the proposals failed at the town meeting in May. What the town council decided was that this subcommittee would replace the MBTA forty-eight three A subcommittee. Because time was at the essence, and we felt as the town leaders, it was time for the town council to take control over this part of the process. And in record time, mainly because of Sam and Steve, and we've got the survey out, we're having this hearing. I mean, we just convened about a month or so ago. We're, we're literally, but we felt it was time for the town, town council to have a subcommittee to try to get this process from here to this fall town meeting.
I absolutely agree with that, and I think, you know, we all work and work for jobs. I understand how to pump out a survey and get a group together. I think what you're doing is amazing, don't get me wrong. But I think there's also like a time and a place to say, okay, nobody wants that Wakefield Station. Can't we, like, chop that one off? Like, let's talk about what we can actually do. I understand you guys have something to achieve. We also have something to achieve. So like, you know, enough with the, hey, my IP address didn't work. Let's actually get to the, like, real, real. And I'm not trying to knock whoever was on the camera, but like, what can we actually do to make this effective? Like, what can we do? Can we do foundry? Count that, count the basin, and then count, you know, Greenwood and, like, repair some of those shops that look like they've been hit by a goddamn hurricane that has never come through Wakefield. I mean, like, can we not, like, clean it up while making it of, like, checking off the list?
Well, the restaurant building you're talking about, we've had a lot of discussion, discussions about in town, but it's kind of a, you know, we could put a, maybe put a district down there, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna solve that problem overnight. You know, we, with our money, we could have maybe used all eight billion to buy that property, maybe, maybe not. That, that would have been one use of it. You know, otherwise, you're talking about eminent domain. Eminent domain is not terribly popular.
And it typically, it can lead to lots of other issues. One other thing I wanna suggest here is if you have a specific wave which you would like people to be communicated with, any ideas, you're more than welcome to reach out to me. You can, there's a direct email address for this. It's MBTA three A, the number three, at Wakefield dot M A dot U S. Feel free to send me a message, and I check it every day. You'll get a response from me. We do try to do as much outreach as possible, but we're always happy to hear from people and, and how to do that better.
Thank you, Steve. We're going back to Karen King. If you wanna unmute yourself. There you go.
I have done so. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. So I could go on and on about all the Foundry Street building and the development that has gone on in that corner of Foundry and Albion and how it has forever changed our neighborhood. But no one has addressed things that are already approved and in the works. So, so my question specifically tonight is, the laundromat, which I believe is ten apartment units, and then the pet, the Mike's Gym that's coming up at some point, which I believe is a hundred units or a hundred and four units, will those be included in this new count under forty A?
They, that there, I'll, I'll take it.
Sorry. I think we give the same answer. Unfortunate.
Yes. The areas where those, or the, the areas, the locations where those buildings are, at our proposed buildings are, could be part of a, could be part of the district. And then we'd have to go through a different calculation depending what the, what the zoning was gonna be for that overlay district. But those app, those, those units that are already permitted via the special permit process, the state will not allow us to count those units. And that's, our hands are tied on that.
So that's, that's really putting a huge additional burden on one neighborhood. You know, I mean, we had, you know, the Mill Building that became the cruise ship, you know, Crystal Lumber, where we all bought our lumber, is becoming a totally unaffordable high-rise, you know, condo. You know, the other two units already opened there. The laundromat being built right now, Mike's Gym's approved and in, in the plan somewhere. I don't know what the date is. And then to still be targeting the Wakefield Station area and think that it's, there's a potential of sixteen hundred ninety-six additional units to be developed in a single neighborhood?
Well, I don't, I don't think all sixteen hundred would be in that area, but it would, it is a, the potential. So you'd have to, like, knock all those buildings down and rebuild, which we don't think anybody would do, because it wouldn't be cost-effective.
If, if, if you're going off of the minimums, the number for, see if I have it here, the number for hitting the fifty percent contiguous. So if you were just to create a contiguous district around Wakefield Station would be eight hundred and forty-eight units. So, you know, that's the minimum number for whatever we can create.
But it's eight hundred and forty-eight units on top of the four hundred already built and the hundred and thirty in works are in the plan. That's what I'm seeing for one neighborhood. It's heavily changed this neighborhood and not in a good way.
I'm, I'm not necessarily disagreeing that the area is already heavily built, and, and the problem that we have, if we're going to create a compliant district, is it has to go somewhere, and I'm not saying it all goes in the West Side. I was against that. But I think, as Samantha's indicated, we have to have one area of fifty percent where it's contiguous, certain rules we have to comply with. Twenty-five percent can be outside of the circles entirely, so that wouldn't be in the neighborhood we're talking about here. And we intend to do. And we intend to do something in Greenwood. There were thirty-seven commercial acres that were not considered in the last go-round. And we are going to take a look at it, whether that will cure the ills you talked about earlier. Uh, I do not know, but in terms of potential growth, as I take the train south, Greenwood is the only place that doesn't have a. A building of significant size right by the track, you know. I take the train, you see them. You see them. I was hiding one of the building one right now. So I'm not picking on Greenwood, but I think it should be a shared sacrifice or a shared benefit. Some view this as a benefit, some view it as a sacrifice, I mean, you can share. So we're trying to minimize. What is done around Wakefield Station. We're trying to do it, um, by not hitting the residential like would have happened under the prior plan. Whether people agree with that or disagree with that. That's what we're hoping to accomplish. Um, but we can't cure all ills. We can't stop what's already. Unapproved. We can't count what they won't let us count. Uh, as I say, we feel your frustration. Um, and you know, I can walk the town over there and I can drive there.
One, one quick thing I would like to get some clarification on, um. I'm asking the public if you understand, if a district is overlapping a currently built structure, it's not that. There is no counting of units as to whether they contribute to that sixteen hundred number. So it would be helpful if you don't think of it from that regard. But if it overlaps an existing building and the easiest way for you to think of it as counting those units, it, it works similarly. The, if, if a site is already developed and it has a density in, like on Foundry Street, you already have. A number of units, say there's three hundred units in one of those buildings. I don't know what the numbers of everything are off the top of my head, but just for ease of, of math. If three hundred units are already built and you throw a total based on MBTA communities. On a potential of four hundred units on top of that, it's a hundred unit difference from what's currently there. That may or may not even be able to be built because they cannot go through a special permit process. So they have to meet the setbacks, they have to meet height, they have to meet parking, they have to meet everything that's required. Under the bylaw and letter of the law, they cannot get a waiver in order to do this. So it's not like you can just go and have, um. A, a, a large amount of things just be built willy-nilly. There are still going to be regulations that have to be met within those areas to build whatever it is that's going to happen.
Why don't we go back in-house? I think Mr. McCauley has.
So I'm strong, Paulie, thirty-two.
Thank you, Kenrod.
I appreciate everything you're doing and the way that you're handling this. I think it's been handled much, much better than the planning board did. I'm very disingenuous by not listening to the public and going over size with this. And then constantly saying all their meetings that they weren't going to consider an alternative map. But I know for a fact they started working on alternative map back in January. Well, the whole time they were saying that they weren't. So I, I, I'm very appreciative of this process. That being said, I still was adamantly against this. I still am adamant against this, and I will fight against this. Three proposals got shot down at town meeting. I would like to do a do-over of the high school, but unfortunately we can't. And now we're having a do-over of this, which got shot down many times. The state is saying that you have to do this, but you have to vote yourself into. The state can't come in and say, this is where the zone is going to be, because the state does not have that authority. Because the home rule, we get to make our own districts. They can't come in and tell us where it has to be. That's why we have to vote ourselves into this. That's why every town has to vote on this. So the fact that Milton chose not to, and they said, well, we're going to take you to court, not pool. And then we're going to push to have somebody come in to carve out zones for you if you choose not to do this. The state can't do that, and they're going to lose. So I know that this is a little bit of a waiting game. I know that we have some time because our deadline wasn't until November. But when you look at things like the specialized energy code, which I voted against, which is a major burden on people building homes, that doesn't apply in this district. They do not have to follow the specialized energy. I don't know what you mean. They don't have to follow the specialized energy. So somebody has a house across town that wants to build a two-family. Not only they have to go through all the hoops in the town, like you can very go through a two-family to a single family and you had to jump through hoops. It's even more hoops when you go to a two-family. If somebody wants to do that across town, then they also have to do the specialized energy code, and that's going to cost them thirty, forty thousand dollars on top of what they don't have to do. They don't have to go through. So you have this big disparity between, in the, in this state town. The fact that only half the state has to abide by this, somebody else is going to. That we're being penalized because of living in this area. The state's already in a deficit. They already said that they need an extra billion dollars. They've always spent a billion dollars because of all the housing they have for all of the, the state. This is grant money. This is not money that's going to always be available. We're lucky if we get grant. Grant money just means they're overtaxing residents and giving out our money. We should be living within our means. I know rent myself there, complying for it, you get it, that's great, but it doesn't mean that we're, we're getting three point seven million dollars. I still haven't seen what that three point seven million dollars represents. It's just that over the past three years, it's there. So when, when you look at all the different things, Boston's, it's, um. Twenty-five percent of Boston real estate downtown is empty right now, but it's all commercial. They don't want to convert that to residential because then it's residential tax rate. If they convert it to residential, they're losing a lot of tax rate. They're already looking to tax businesses more in downtown Boston. Now, I know they supposedly already meet this criteria, but they carved out Boston. Boston is the hub of the MBTA. The MBTA is losing money left and right and poorly managed for decades. They're even in the stuff the MBTA puts out lately, they're very, not very flattering in the way that they're promoting their stuff, and they go, oh, it's definitely. So. Wakefield is building gangbusters. This place is all you have. The, the old, um, the, the old. Concilony up on the top of the hill, all kinds of building up there. Um, North Avenue, the Han Street, Mike's Gym, all the stuff. I don't think that we are negligent in, in, in building out our town to make it available for people to want to move in. The fact that Wakefield's housing rate is still high because of the market is great. It's great for the homeowners in this town. People say affordability. There is no affordability in this act. You can't get ten percent for a family unit, right? If, if it says, oh, well, ten percent can be affordable, well, if you have a four-family unit, you're not going to get ten percent of that, right? So that doesn't apply. If they wanted to be affordable, they would have made it less than eighty percent of the, um.
AMI?
Yes.
Very median.
But now it has to be over eighty percent, which forty B, it has to be under eighty percent, but for this, it's over eighty percent. Read it. It says over eighty percent.
I was just on the phone with the director about this earlier today. So the way that we can actually, it's eighty percent or less. Um, it's. No, I spoke with them today. So, uh, what the director told me personally, on, on a Zoom call. Um, is that the way that the, the law is written currently is that you can do ten percent by rights. Her name is Chris, by the way. Um, if you want to ever click it up.
Or you need to jump through hoops.
You, you can do ten percent by right with no hoops, eighty percent or less AMI. But you can't change, you can't reduce that threshold of eighty percent. It has to stay at eighty percent. If you want to do what they call deeper affordability, which means less than eighty percent, so let's say fifty percent AMI for the area. Then that requires something called an economic feasibility analysis or an EFA. And would be something we need to go through if we wanted to get closer to our, um, eighteen percent number that we have through inclusionary zoning or anything else like that.
I'll go back and read it because that was not my understanding. So it's a little complicated. And the fact that you said coming from Arlington to Wakefield because it was a bargain for you to come here because the prices are much higher. Affordable homes, starter homes in Wakefield in these zones are just going to get scooped up by developers. So people think that they're going to be able to buy these homes and then convert them into these private. Developers are going to come out, they're going to pay cash, and they're going to strip all those starter homes away from people. They're going to take single-family homes, they're going to tear them down, they're going to build four-unit compartmented buildings on those. And so I, I just, I don't see this, the infrastructure, you've got two point four people per household. If you take. If you know sixteen hundred ninety-six things divided by four, right, four units per building, that's four hundred and twenty of those, that's what, two point four people. Then exponentially you're increasing these point four people are kids in schools. What are those doing? Our school systems? You're talking about two million dollars, which is one of the grants we got for a water main. I mean, what remains of town are we going to have to upgrade that are costing two million dollars to, to supply all these homes over the next twenty years? This, this whole thing is just, it's, it's not a good situation of town. It's going to turn us into Arlington and into Bedbury, other areas like that. So this is a problem. Yes.
I mean, I respect your opinion that you don't think we should comply, but I think that. I would hope you would agree with me that as the town leaders, it's our responsibility to take this time between now and November.
And, and I, I appreciate that.
And put together something that then the town as a whole can make a decision on the town meeting.
Right.
So it would, it would be, um, irresponsible for us if we didn't take the initiative to try to put this together.
But the town as a whole already made it clear at town meeting three times.
Of the, of those plans.
On the three companies.
But you're doing, but you're doing the same thing, just in a different area. No, we're not doing the same thing. We're not doing the same thing.
But in different areas.
I have been sitting here telling people, I don't want it to touch the residential if we can do that.
Because you want to excuse the business.
It's insignificantly different. We'd be more likely to get any guess at this then. I had already said, if the town, if a majority in town meeting wants to, whatever we come up with, through this public discussion and through our own, we'll follow up. You know, we go up with a plan and it fails, I'm not falling on my sword. So if, if, you know, and I, I, I'd rather be. Milton than the Commonwealth in the location, but that's just my own personal opinion. Where did you get this site, by the way? I would like the citation for why. Specialized energy code doesn't apply to forty-eight, too. A citation for that.
Right, you're right in the guidelines. It says in the, that, that's the third law.
Could you check on that place, Steve?
Yeah, it's already in my notes.
For, for, uh, energy officials and stuff, we're not applying.
And, and the other thing, you know, it's really political, right? We're, we're not, we're not a political party. We're not partisan, elected officials. And, you know, relative to taxation, we all know the, boy, do I know about taxation. It's my living. But, you know, yeah. Those dollars are paid through, through our taxes, so we don't get our piece of the action. So I understand your argument, but the other argument is we're waving on three point seven million. And you said they're not identified. They're identified specifically in our point. And, and by the way, I'll tell you, because I have done this. I want to be totally transparent. It was three point seven million over three years. It was three point seven million over five years. We've had a couple of grants this year that were reduced, you know, after we thought we had them in our pockets. So I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm going to point out the difference. The difference is we're going to try to propose a different plan. If it attains a majority at town meeting, it does. If it doesn't, it doesn't. Um.
You've got two other hands in here, too.
A quick question to the survey. I heard you mention that you had seven hundred responded so far.
That's what I'm told from these folks, yeah.
If, if are the responses that you have, if a, a propensity of those says, we don't want this. What are you doing with that?
I, I'm still, I would still tend to propose a plan because there's a certain amount of motivation that some folks have, you know, that might be greater motivation than others. Um, and I know that you, you are part of a very motivated group. Um, so I would look at that and, you know, I would probably look at it and say, well, I'm still going to probably go forward and propose a plan. If, if two hundred and fifty people show up and vote no at town meeting, and there's four hundred and fifty people there, and we've got anywhere from one hundred to. Gosh knows how many of the, the top of the issue. And so, yeah, that would be my personal thought. Steve, you want to go online?
Yeah, Marie Olivera. Thank you.
We'll get to you guys.
Marie, you can unmute and talk.
Hi.
February.
Over on the Han Street, dealing with two mega projects over here. Um, and what comes up for me, and I'd like some clarity around that, is, um. Does the zoning, and you touched upon this. So unlike forty Bs with these forty As. The town, uh, via the planning board can turn down any proposals that don't meet certain. Um, existing requirements. Is that correct?
Not go through the public hearing process. They are something that would be done by right. So they need to meet all of the criteria without going through any public hearing process. If they cannot meet that criteria, then they cannot be built.
Okay, um, I, I, I have some concerns, um, about that, especially. Um, you know, housing by right and. Over the years, we, we just seem to be losing control of our own town. And it's, it's nice to do some projections around, well, we'll do this, we'll have this and. And, and it sounds wonderful, but how it turns out really depends on the developers. Who come in here with their vision and their expectations and what they want to do. So, you know, having struggled with this forty B that looked good. However, many years ago, doesn't look so good now. That's my fear around changing all of this. Which looks doable and practical and reasonable now. But takes on a life of its own and looks very different down the road, and we are stuck with it. So that's, uh, that's my input. You guys did a great job, uh, making the presentation and spending the time about. Uh, splitting, um, out where it would go. But th- there's just so many moving pieces and as you've said. It's really complicated to even wrap your head around it. Um, that, um, it just, um, it, it just really concerns me. So thank you.
Bill Marullo, Four Cow Road. So, yeah, like she was saying, I, I think if people revisited the forty D. When it came out, if it was thirty years ago and how long we still haven't reached ten percent, they might think differently about proposing it. And approving it. Like she says, there's unintended consequences to a lot of these theoretical plans that are going to. Improve, um, housing and, and, and lower the cost of housing. So, but I don't know how we can even make a decision. If the number that you've given us for the number of units you think is going to be developed. I don't know how firm that is. Could be double, uh, three times that amount. You haven't told us how many units are already permitted. Um, so we don't know in total, if this goes through, how many units it potentially could be. It could be. You might have numbers that you think you're comfortable with. It could be two and three times the amount. So you want us to make a decision. You can't tell us really, in the end, three, four, five, seven, ten years from now. How many additional units is this town going to support? You haven't told us the cost on public safety, the cost of infrastructure, the cost of additional schooling. You don't have numbers on impact for traffic and parking. The numbers that you have, I know alone. Okay? Uh, and you haven't, you, you don't take into consideration the quality of life in this town and the tax. Okay, forty B, all this building on Foundry Street, the tax basis has expanded in this town exponentially. But in the last five years, my taxes have gone up forty percent. Um, you, you don't even know. The three point seven million dollars, if our costs are going to outpay what you're saying we've gotten grants, and you can't even tell us that. Going forward, we'll get that among grants. So if you were any business. And you were doing a cost benefit analysis, you have no information other than the fact that you want to sell a plan. That might be palatable at some point to comply with the state. That is basically withholding our tax dollars and extorting money from us. Okay, so let me just tell you what happens when somebody comes into this town. These two families, single families, need fifty, nine hundred thousand dollars. They're bought up by developers. People cannot afford to put six hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars into a single family to make it a three family. The developers are going to do it. And what's going to happen now is the majority of two families, three families in this town, four families even. They have one bathroom, two bedrooms. And they might be twenty-six hundred to three thousand dollars a month. When the developers come in, they buy the property for eight hundred and fifty thousand, they put four, five, six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars into it. Now those units have four bedrooms, four bathrooms. And not everybody's using the T. So instead of two point four cars, you have four, six, eight, twelve cars. Instead of a two-family with two or three adults. Three people, four, five people, you have eight and ten people in a unit. Because the rents are going to be four thousand plus a month from the people that are currently paying twenty-two hundred, uh, twenty-six hundred dollars a month. And so I really don't understand how you can present. This without knowing what the costs are, without giving us real numbers on how many units we're going to be at such a point. It's going to cost in terms of infrastructure, school. It's gonna cost in terms of infrastructure, schools, the quality of life. You cannot get through this town right now. First time in my life, I've been here thirty something years, nine o'clock in the morning, I said, I'm not going there. Because if I go, I'm on all this traffic going across town, two in the afternoon. I'm not going there. I mean, this isn't Everett, Malden, Cambridge. This was a good working class town. It's been urbanized. The forty Bs started it. We were promised a ten percent, like I said. Thirty years later, how many units have expanded? My taxes keep going up. They're going up way more than three, four, five, six percent. They're going up sixteen, twenty percent? Okay, so the last point is, I think it's very disingenuous that I was on the Zoom calls with the planning board. Oh, there's one plan. There's only one plan. I think one of the, one of the guys here had said, well, give us Plan B and C, because you know Plan A is not gonna pass. Oh, no, there's only one plan. We get to the, the hearing, the town meeting, all of a sudden, there's Plan A, B, and C. Now all of a sudden, Foundry Street's in play. I really don't like the process of this local town government and the way they're trying to sell this to the citizens, even though I'm sure they know it's not gonna prove the quality of life for the citizens. It might bring people from Boston here because it's cheaper. It might bring other people here. Citizens are leaving this town, this state. Who's coming in? Who's gonna benefit from this? Not the people that have been here, raised their kids here and want to retire here. Because you're gonna get unaffordable for people that have been here for thirty-four years to, to stay here. But you want to bring other people in because it's a lot more affordable than Boston? I mean, I don't agree with any of this. Like this gentleman said, I thought it was clear that we didn't want this. Not that just we didn't want A, B, and C planned. We don't want this. So when is the vote that says yes or no? And why is the town council, the administrator, they haven't done a cost analysis, but they want to keep pursuing this until they get to a point where they think it's gonna be palatable to the people of this town?
All right, Mr. Marullo, I was on one of those calls with you and I agreed with you on a lot of things. It sounds like you're arguing this, which was the last three plans. I told the folks, don't come in with a Plan B. You're gonna get killed. They did, and they did. I pretty much agree with a lot of your economic arguments. Growth begins growth, right? We have twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand, and twenty-seven thousand people. What tends to happen over time is that our revenue increases, but so do our costs. You're absolutely right about that. You're right about traffic. You're right about a lot of your concerns. All I'm asking you is to not say to us, why are you doing something as if we're trying to do what was already done? Three plans we're going on, we're gonna come up with one other alternative plan. You keep talking about two families.
Why?
I don't want two families to be a part of this.
Why pursue this? Why not stand, why not stand up to the state and say, we're not gonna take it anymore?
We can, but that's gonna be a voter's time. And if we come in with a plan that will give us the access to the, potential access to the grant money that keeps a lot of the units out of the residential, which was a big complaint, was my complaint too. Even though it didn't touch my house, it was down the street, you know, looking down the west side, I'm saying this is crazy. But if we come in with one that, you know, basically utilizes some of the commercial zones and utilizes further density, and there were a lot of people in that room too, who were persuadable, who, I've had people walk up to me and say, I wasn't necessarily against it. It's the way the whole thing proceeded. I have had some people say that to me.
How does it benefit, how does it bene-, I'm sorry to, to cut you off, okay?
Well, that's what I, I, I know you said you're, say you're hoping.
Okay, good, good. Answer this. How does it benefit any, with, any of the citizens in this place? How does it improve the quality of life for us?
Well, as I said too.
Because, because we might continue to get grant money that's basically a tax money anyway?
Well, the first part of it is, is do we have an obligation to adhere to state law? Hold on. Also, we are the quasi-executive branch of this town. My personal opinion is the seven people on the town council should make the decision for twenty-seven thousand people as to whether we should bring this up at town meeting in the fall. I think the legislative branch of this town, which is town, should be given the opportunity to make this decision in November. I don't feel comfortable of being one of seven people to make this decision for twenty-seven thousand. So I'm, I along with Councilman McLean and Councilman Nebraska and the town staff are taking the multitude of hours it's going to take to put a presentation together, so then the town can collectively look at it, getting input from the town and make an informed decision in November as to whether we want to go forward or not. I think that's, that's my duty. That's why we, my master's duty, that's my.
I, 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 I appreciate that, and I appreciate that explanation. I disagree because I don't see the due diligence. There's no cost. There's no traffic. There's no data. Okay, all there is is, this plan didn't work. How about this one? Okay, these three don't work. How about this one? Where is, if, if you're spending all the time, and I like to say, I appreciate it, I know it's not paid, but I, I have to say that if somebody was presenting, presenting this proposal to me, where are the costs? Where's the analysis?
We're getting a proposal tonight. We're getting.
You are, you are presenting it. You're telling us about Foundry Street, Greenwood, Melrose Highlands, and we have no data, no cost analysis.
You're right. We don't. We don't have any of that information for you because we're not actually presenting these. These are examples of areas. So these are the three station areas. I want to make sure that everybody can see them.
I'll, I don't wanna talk over you. I'm gonna end it with this, okay? You did present these proposals at the town meeting, A, B, and then there was a citizen's petition, somebody at the town council. None of them had done the due diligence to tell us, is the cost of any of these plans gonna exceed what we might get in grants? Is it gonna lower our taxes? Is it gonna improve the quality of life in this town? No. It's just, well, this didn't work. Let's try, see if we can get this pushed through. That's my sense. I might be off base. I'm not trying to be.
No, you're not off base. You're lucky. Have your own.
I don't, I don't understand how they can be all this effort, time, and analysis done and have no numbers to back it up.
Because we're back in square one. But what I would really appreciate is if you could give me some quality of life things that you would really like to see from some of these developments and send it to me an email. I'm happy to chat with you.
That's not happening.
That's not good enough. Thank you anyway.
Everyone, Pat Taylor, Emerson Street. Um, couple questions. So, looking at the map, um, that's up on the screen there around Wakefield Station, it doesn't look like that, avoids the residential areas. So one of my proposals would be moving the map to highlight the already, uh, commercial areas. So from North Ave to Main Street and then where the apartment complexes are already down on Foundry. So I would like to see that as a, a plan proposed. And then would that cover fifty percent of the continuous area that we have to meet? Do we know that answer?
I have that answer for you, actually. Um, and I have the numbers, a rough estimate of numbers that I did earlier today because I figured this question would come up. We can utilize something called a mandatory mixed-use area to maintain the mixed-use that is along North Ave and along Main Street downtown and be able to include a component of the residential area between the two of those that is already multifamily and get, along with Foundry, and get very close to those. I still need to go back and talk to our, um, uh, our, we have a consultant that's helping me with mapping. Uh, because there's so many pieces to juggle with this right now in, in the short period of time. But there is a chance that that, uh, a very probable chance that that could meet the minimum of that fifty percent contiguous area with limited impact on any of the residential areas. And it completely excludes the west side, aside from Foundry Street, which is technically the west side of, of, uh, right back.
Yeah, thank you very much. That, I mean, I would love to see that as a, a proposed plan that we could vote on. Uh, my second question is, um, understand that the grants, uh, potentially we're gonna miss out on some grants. Uh, my concern would be around school capacity. So with increased, um, mixed use in mid-rise condo complexes, I would assume our schools will be at a higher capacity. So, do we have any data or could we kick off a study for what that would look like for our school system and what the cost to our school system would be? And then a follow-on question would be, would any of the grants be able to support increasing the school capacity? Um, because, you know, maybe that would offset some of the costs that the city has to, uh, hold the burden for. Thank you.
So, uh, I can answer a very brief version of that. Um, typically in multifamily buildings, there is not a substantial increase. Um, I have the numbers back in the office. I don't have them with me right now, uh, but I'm happy to, to chat more about it one on one if anybody has any specific questions. Um, but studies have been done throughout the country, not just here in Wakefield, in Massachusetts. We've talked to the school district. We also have to be very careful in talking about schools, um, and families. We want to make sure that we're following any fair housing regulations and that we're not violating the Fair Housing Act. Um, we cannot pick and choose who we educate anywhere, um, just like we can't pick and choose who's living in a particular unit. So the impact to the tax dollars, there's a very, very long explanation that I can get into again, um, that has a lot more information about that. Uh, but typically grants are available as students. And there are a number of grants that are based on student enrollment. So as student enrollment goes up, there aren't more monies that are typically, uh, available to to the, around the state. But I don't have specific numbers on the number of jobs yet right now. So feel free to email me if you want to talk about that a little bit more in detail.
Specifically, Chapter Seventy money is somewhat based on numbers of students. That's one of the largest numbers in the state. So there is some money.
But that's not effective.
That's not effective. No, but if you had, the question was, if you had more students, would we get more? So, yes, questions, yes. I'm gonna go back here just so we can, this gentleman here.
Noah Thompson, I'm sorry, Noah Thompson, uh, Main Street. Um, I do like the, sort of the focus the room has on, you know, what does this mean for the existing residents of this town? Um, there's, you know, the old joke that economists could only agree on one thing, and that's rent control is bad. But that saying has sort of been amended to, there's two things now, that restricting the amount of housing that can be built increases the price of housing. It's basic supply and demand. And as, you know, someone who has seen their property tax in the last five years go up, I think, what, thirty, thirty-five percent, give or take? And then, you know, the median home price, I, I, what, hit nine hundred was the, I believe what I saw on the item last, last month. It, it's only going up. So, you know, we can, you know, re- keep restricting the amount of housing that we're, that's being built. And then we're just gonna just keep seeing our property taxes go up and up and up and up as those valuations go up, which is great if you're like, if you want to sell and get out of this community. That's not great if you want to stay in this community and you don't want to sell. And especially if you are on a fixed income and want to remain in this community, so you're not forced out. And then also to per, as far as the, the MBTA, you know, communities and specifically development about, um, around the, uh, the railroad stations. Again, if, if we vote this down, not only are we missing out on that grant money, in addition to, I, I believe it's still an open question about that, the state, uh, the state money that's, I think it's almost ten million dollars coming to reconstruct Main Street downtown, if that's gonna be affected or not, right? That's, if we miss out on that money, that's a heck of a lot of extra taxes on top of just the extra taxes that we're gonna be paying as our valuations keep going up and up and up. And then, you know, if we're still not gonna be hitting the ten percent requirement of forty B, so there's going to be more developments, you know, places like Nahat Street, where each one of those residents, to go anywhere, let alone work, is going to have to get in an automobile and drive and contribute to traffic. As opposed to, you know, for example, uh, the developments going on around Foundry Street in downtown or what's, you know, being, you know, encouraged for us to vote on for the MBTA Communities Act. Or even if all of those residents do not take the train to Boston every day, you know, people self-select. The ma- strong majority of people who are going to live in these developments are probably going to take the train, which is one less car for you to get stuck behind when you're trying to get across town. And so, I mean, I, I do think there is a lot that we could lose by not going forward with any plan. And, you know, especially like, I, I for one am not lamenting the loss of Old Foundry Street where it's, you know, some post-apocalyptic, you know, Everett-looking gas tank with wasteland, right?
Yeah.
Right? So if we're smart about this and we concentrate development, you know, I'm thinking of the Yelling on the Street corridor too, right? Where, you know, having some mixed use there, we essentially get another downtown street for free, which, you know, people living there, that's gonna, you know, juice up the amount of people who patronize those restaurants, who, you know, actually come downtown, which I know is, I mean, I, I'm one of these people too. I mean, uh, I, I, I find myself going down to Melrose more often too, because there's just more things to do in that downtown area. So I don't think this is an albatross to, you know, to return some property rights, you know, to, to landowners, you know, to homeowners. And, you know, if we're smart about this, we can get a win-win-win where we can see our taxes go down. We can see people not only be able to afford to remain here, but their kids able to afford here. I mean, I, I don't know everyone's situation in this room, but I doubt that the majority of people in this room, that your kids will be able to afford over nine hundred thousand dollars for a starter home. And frankly, for me, community is the people who live in a town. Not necessarily, you know, just because in a little, you know, half-mile area, we might, may allow four-story buildings. Like, we're not talking about putting in the Hancock Building on Foundry Street or anything. But thi- this is the choice, and it, it's fundamental. We can choose to preserve what our town looks like in amber and then have the people who live here not afford to live here and all those people from Boston who work in biotech or from Cambridge or whatever, replace us. Or we can preserve the, again, the vast, vast, vast majority of this town to look exactly the same way it is. Or we can allow this community to remain a community. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings. Yes, Cummings. This is Cummings. Cummings, you can unmute.
Hi, Ellen Cummings on the Han Street. I just, I am against this whole MBTA district thing. We are able to trash our own community without them. The Foundry Street buildings are huge. I don't know about Main Street because I can't get there because I can never get out of the intersection at Broadway. So I understand where you're all coming from, that you have to do this to fulfill your professional obligations as the town. But I'm gonna vote this down again too. We don't need more building. The schools that we're putting up right now are gonna be obsolete before they're even done. I can't get from, I can't get anywhere if it's, you know, on any kind, like, four o'clock in the afternoon. It's insane. And it's not even like you're building nice buildings, so it's, it's whatever. But as far as I'm concerned, you've already trashed the town of Wakefield and you're just making it worse if you let the state get involved also. Thank you.
Not in my backyard.
Hi, Debbie Fox, Publicist Bride. Um, I wanna tell you a couple things. Number one, Steve, you were wrong about saying we didn't vote for the delegates that voted for this because we voted for the people in the State House. So we did vote for them, and that's what we got.
I don't think I was wrong. I think one of the things is that no one here voted for the law.
Not for the law.
Right.
We voted for who voted for the law. So we need to rethink that. Okay. Um, another thing, I have a question that nobody can answer for me. What caused this so-called housing crisis? Anybody know?
I'll, I'll answer that. I don't know that anyone knows. I know that the Commonwealth says that we have a housing crisis. We need two hundred thousand more housing units. I don't know that I necessarily agree with that.
I think part of the reason the state, my opinion, the state feels there's a housing crisis is the forty-eight, I'm sorry, the forty B was passed back around nineteen seventy-two, so you're talking about fifty years. And still, I think seventy-seven percent of the municipalities in Massachusetts are not at ten percent. I think that's one of the components as to why the state as a whole, this was a Governor Baker initiative along with the Massachusetts Legislature, decided that there was a housing crisis, and this was one of the ways to, to fix that crisis. Um, but based on my research of the past of forty B, how old it is, and the fact that most municipalities, like we're currently, I think, at eight point nine four percent.
It might be a little bit higher.
Eight point eight nine.
Eight point eight nine percent. Um, so we're getting closer. Back, by the way, back in twenty fifteen, before we passed zoning by law one ninety dash thirty-two, the convention. Back, by the way, back in twenty fifteen, before we passed zoning by law one ninety dash thirty-two, the conventional housing. Bylaw that Mr. Mayo moved to earlier, we were about six point eight four percent. So we've gone from twenty fifteen, from six point eight four percent to whatever figure you just gave me, eight point eight four. That's good progress in nine years, but you can still see it's a long way to get to ten percent.
See, that was a mistake, we didn't fight back then. We didn't fight to stop it, because every town meeting, the town administrator would get up and say, we're at five percent. We only have a few more houses, go, we'll get there. And then the state goes and changes the rules, just like they'll do with this if it gets passed. They just keep upping it and upping and upping. So they're still gonna get at us. The other thing is, I'm not a lawyer, but I know what the state is doing to us is extortion. That's the only word for it, it's extortion. You don't do this, we're gonna take this away. People don't stop and think of that. You're really causing extortion. Coming after us and they're threatening us. You wouldn't take that if it was a neighbor or somebody else doing this to you. You'd say, I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna fight it. The other thing I haven't seen, as Scott mentioned it tonight, which I brought up before. Matter of fact, in March, I put a letter in the item about the home rule, which is under the Massachusetts Constitution. That's the only thing that's saving the towns that are fighting this. The home rule says the towns take care of their own zone. But I never saw anyone with any of these plans talk about and say, or even in their, their PowerPoint or anything, saying, under home rule. None of you have ever used that home rule that's there to protect us. Not once have any of you used it or said it in anything that's been published. And as far as my crystal ball, in March, I put a letter in the paper about the home rule, and I said, we'll go to town meeting to vote on the plans. And miraculously, a second plan is gonna pop up from the planning board. And lo and behold, it did. I wasn't surprised, some people were surprised. I wasn't, because they were told to make one more palatable. That's the word now that you use, make it palatable. Well, none of this is palatable to many people in town.
I think we've explained that the town council took the initiative last month to create a subcommittee to have more control over the process.
Right, I understand, yep. Now, as far as the surveys. I heard this young woman say IPs don't matter, now they do. I did my survey online, my husband and daughter came home from work, we have one family computer. They couldn't do it online. I have a sister, a mother-in-law, all three handicapped, all seniors. Only one could do the survey. They can't jump in the car and run down and find a survey around town. So you're eliminating and blocking a lot of people. I know what you're gonna say, I can contact you, I will take care of it.
That's actually not what I was gonna say, but feel free to continue on, whatever else you want to say.
One thing that has not been.
Service.
Brought up, that. The state passed, recently passed, ADU law. Have you heard of that one?
It's not passed yet.
Not passed yet.
We're gonna pass it.
It might.
And that's gonna be by rights. That your neighbor can go and throw a thousand square foot second home in your backyard, and you can't say a damn thing about it. So the state is coming after the small towns. They're saying, somebody already said it here about the money. That five or seven million dollars is nothing, the town waste more than that, right around, you can see. You're a little bit of a burden, you see the waste of the town. We don't need to rely on the state to give us back our own money, we should be suing the state, yes, we should be. And I have one question I got.
Your opinion on that, and I've said that. If town meeting votes this down, whatever we come up with, and it's gonna be different, this rules, it could be two families into four families, then so be it. We've all said that, and we're gonna come in with a minimum. I agree with you, there shouldn't have been a second plan showing up at town meeting, I didn't like it, I voted against it. The third one was grabbed from a working, so when I started talking about Greenwood, some iterations were made of something in Greenwood. You know, and when, in that process, whenever a town councilor said, well, I'm gonna try, you know, and grab one of those so that we do at least have a minimum plan. That wasn't me, that was, you know, Councilor Dombrowski, and it failed as well. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna present something differently. I'm interested in your home rule argument, because we will, I will ask town administrator to ask the town council whether I haven't heard that one as being a protection. My understanding is that Bill was fighting the common, just by virtue of voting it down. And represented by a very, very good Boston law firm. And I, two years ago, went into the town administrator's office, and we both looked at that law, and I said, this is a strange statute, it's penal in nature. This is like, if you don't do this, somewhere to what you're saying, and, and we don't like the law. I don't like the law, I've never liked the law. But in our position, as Councilor Vincent said, we are going to do our best to bring something to town meeting. And the town legislature is town meeting, it's not, you folks will decide, thumbs up or thumbs down, or whatever we bring forward. And we're not bringing the same thing forward. I hope to bring nothing remotely like what we see forward, and I hope it passes. But again, I understand the cost arguments, but, you know, you don't prove economics, right? I know that your taxes aren't going down when we grow. I mean, we all know, three or thirty-four years, I get. You know, and growth begets growth, and then you're gonna hire another, you know, teacher, you're gonna hire another fireman, you're gonna hire another police. I understand that. The easiest way in forty-B is so unfair. It's been grown for decades, the suburban communities can't make it, very difficult to make it. Boston's got twenty percent, they don't have to worry, that's their housing stock. But we keep trying and trying and trying, you know, and for the folks that have commented from Nahat Street. The easiest way that we could make our ten percent in forty-B would be to do something that GBA is not doing right now, and the town council is not doing right now. And that would be to say, you wanna put a hundred units on, under forty-B on the hot street, go ahead. Have we done that? We have not, we're fighting. So, I mean, we're doing the best we can, folks, that's all I can tell.
Okay, just one last thing. The. I wanna try to be polite about this. Somebody that moves into town.
It doesn't matter to me.
It's not even at you, really, no. I have seen so many new people come to town. They come to town, they buy a house, great, you're welcome and everything. Then they turn around and bitchy moan about everything in the town. Oh, look at this, look at that, look at that, why the hell did you buy here? If you don't like what Main Street looks like, if you don't like, like what not that looks like, don't buy the friggin' house. Thank you.
Brandon LaRoche on line. Mr. LaRoche, you should be, if you want to mute, there you go.
Thank you, sorry, I was muted, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so Brandon LaRoche, Tudelano Lane. So I've been following this quite a bit, I've lived here in Wakefield for three years now. And I just, I wanna point out just a couple of thoughts with some articles of other towns have handled this. So there was an article recently, Wellesley. They're doing paper compliance, which is they're zoning, for the most part, the nines and other developments that already meet the compliance standards of the state. So they're not adding more stock, they're just taking credit for what's already there. I think that's the same approach that Swam Scott took. The other thing I kept hearing like over and over again from a couple gentlemen, and we heard at town meeting also, which I'd gone to. Was that, oh, okay, this will lower the property values if we add additional housing stock. So I, I was curious about that argument, I looked at some articles. And there was actually a two thousand and four study that showed that for areas with a hundred percent of the area of medium income. It found that single-family home values actually became higher when you had more multifamily housing. And there was another study that was in the National Association of Home Builders. That also found that single-family homes and areas of multifamily housing tend to appreciate more quickly in value than those in single-family neighborhoods. But that makes sense, right? So if you think about supply and demand, people are looking for single-family houses, you convert them to multifamily. You now have less single-family houses to buy, so now those are all gonna be worth more. So I guess my point is like, I, I think we need to, like, I, I think. The arguments of not being able to do this, I think ultimately they'll probably lose in court. I, I don't think we'll win with the state on this. But I do think, like, the Foundry Street and some of these other areas that were put in place. When they were put back in place in town meeting, I'd read the item articles about it, going back years when they first proposed the zoning changes. And part of the thought at the time from the town meeting and everyone who were advocating for that. Was they were close to the train station in walkable neighborhoods. Which makes sense that we would then wanna try to include as much of these houses and apartments that already exist into the development as well. And then the last thing I thought of is just some of the buildings aesthetic-wise that are being put up, that they look not great. So I think like any part of this, like, development, it should, we should have strict rules in zoning about how the buildings look and how they fit into the character of the town. And I do agree with trying to balance between first-floor commercial where we can and residential and other areas. But I, I really think part of the reason this didn't successfully pass at town meeting. Was because there was so much of a focus on just the residential areas. Which, again, I would caution us from doing that, because I think you would see significant increases. If we converted most of those single and double families to multifamilies, I think you'd see significant increases in the property values, the remaining single families in the town of Wakefield. So that was kind of all I wanted to talk about and share, but. Have you heard kind of ideas about studies like that where it shows that when you convert the single family to multifamily, that you start seeing changes in the. Housing prices of those neighborhoods?
I, I have not, I, I have, I had concerns about the Springtown meeting vote that if we had. Taken some of these single families that are in the general residence zone, because they're not all two families, a lot of them are singles. And they want to, getting converted, we would reduce the amount of single-family homes that are available for purchase. Which, as I've indicated, it's just an opinion, that's about the most affordable housing stock we've got left. It's not really affordable. So I understand what you're saying, you know, multifamilies could increase the value. You know, I've never really bought into the proposition that build, build, build is gonna bring prices down. I've heard some people say that, and it just doesn't make economic sense to me.
And so my last question is kind of with this topic is, has there been, like, really a big look at how we could get compliance with what we already have? And have we looked at compliance models of, let's take all the foundry, all the multifamily that already exists. Let's get the contiguous area, and let's see if we could do this whole compliance plan with maybe just a one hundred, two hundred, very, very minimal. Additional housing stock to take credit for what already exists.
I think we're trying to do some of that. Now, when I'll let our planner discuss that.
Yeah, so we, we don't use the term paper compliance, but we are trying to keep. The district in this iteration as directed by town council and from the comments that came out of. Springtown meeting, trying to get it as close to the minimum numbers as possible, trying to keep it out of the residential areas. Trying to utilize existing areas that are already more densely developed, like Foundry. Some of the mixed use that's on North Ave, possibly looking at Main Street. They're trying to keep it out of the residential areas, and again, trying to keep those numbers as low as possible of the potential units as well as the average. I don't have a plan, so I can't say that that's definitely what's going to happen, because A will be based on public comment. And then B, voted on at town meeting. But our goal is to meet as much of what the public is requesting and put forth that plan. So if that's what people are asking for, then we will work to try to figure out how to do something along those lines.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I was trying to see if I still had saved the article from Swam Scott. But the only reason I mentioned the paper compliance piece is that's what one of the news articles had said. But I, I think Swam Scott had had really, uh, when they were interviewed about it, they had said, oh, Swam, I found it. It says, the news is Swam Scott's already in compliance. So I think, right, like, if we already are in compliance with it, we should take credit for what we've already built to do. So thank you for looking at that as an option.
Thank you.
Don Valeria, Frank Street. I have this all figured out, it's very simple. We go to the state, we say five hundred homes, that's, that's what, that's what we can handle. But actually, I'm trying to make light of this a little bit, but I have a lot of strong feelings about, about all this. We should be able to tell the state what our town can handle, right? They shouldn't be telling us that's eighteen hundred, whatever, units, whatever. But we should be able to know, or within a little bit of time, be able to tell them, our town can handle about. I mean, does that make sense? Throwback at them like that, so we can't, can't let them.
I don't think they're negotiating this.
Unless you try.
That's part of what Mark Milton is actually citing, is their, their categorization as a protected transit community. Since they only have a very small portion of it that's accessed by the trolley.
Yeah. With a couple of train stations, we think, be able to make this a argument.
I'm, I am not here to make legal arguments, I'm here to share information and facts.
They haven't proven to us that that number of units is good for the town, right?
No, it's based off of their measurement of what the developable area is, which is, I'm not totally certain where they got that number from. But they, they have a calculation for getting the developable area within the station parameters, and then they come up with the unit count based on that fifteen units per acre number.
It's just topical.
I'm, yeah, I don't have to share that.
So that's, I, I don't think they should be able to tell us, with a five-story building on Nahat Street, which is a skinny, two-lane road. It's dangerous and already probably clogged in between two construction sites of high schools and middle school. I don't think they should be able to tell us that we can double the amount of people essentially living on that one street, but apparently they can't.
We ever, we were gonna create our own multifamily zoning districts in Wakefield before all this, but we have known where they would go. Because we don't have a multifamily, any multifamily zoning districts now, right?
We have multifamily, but it's two units.
Two units.
And then there's, there's mixed-use areas, mixed-use overlay. But, yeah, but we don't have something that is, I mean, there's a, just slide for this, right here. So what we have by right, there's two-family, general residential mixed-use, neighborhood business and business. And then multifamily, which is three units or more, is by special permit. Which is what, three units or more is what MBTA communities is considering their multifamily, that's their bare minimum threshold, not two families. Although you could do two, two-unit buildings on one lot, they're requiring a certain number of units per acre.
Surrounding towns, some of them have a, most, and, mountains. Single, single family. Four, five, six-unit zoning districts in other towns have those already.
I think most would have those by special permit. We, we have a special permit area too.
Yeah.
We have to pass it.
Yeah.
They want it to be state-run, it isn't.
Most towns I look at, I, so I just bought a house for something, most towns I look at do not allow the denser multifamily by right.
Oh, I think you had it.
Yes, Jane McConnell, I live on Cedar Street. I live on the end of Cedar Street near Blue, and, yes, I'm Paws mom. So, listening to all of this, I, you know, I've attended every Zoom meeting there's been, and, and I've lived here in over thirty-six years. And I've worked in the school system here, and at St. Joseph's School, and I'm vested in the community at Blue Heaven Reading. But listening to all of the talk. I live close enough to Foundry Street that no matter what you do, it's, I'm still gonna be affected. The traffic near my home has increased beyond. Seriously, beyond, I can't tell you. My strip of Cedar Street has a two-hour parking limit. And nobody comes around and tickets a car. Nobody comes around and tickets a car, cars are on the driveway, sidewalks. They can come, they pull up on the sidewalk, they're there all day. So I don't have any faith that I fill in these units and saying that people are gonna take the train. That it's gonna be monitored. It never has been, and, you know, they want me to call them and tell them there's a car parked, and they'll come check it out. Well, that's really not my job, you know, as far as that goes. But my other concern is that. The u- the number of units going in. Is going to affect the traffic more, again. There are days that the traffic on Albion Street between North Ave and the Stoneham Line is backed up way beyond where. Way beyond where Oxlough Peggy Street. And you can't get onto Albion Street. If you had to. They don't let you in, they run the traffic light, they run the stop signs. It has increased and it's more dangerous. They. Also Prospect Street has the same issue. You, you can't come down Prospect Street at certain times of the day either. And the traffic is backed up beyond a little red and you can't get out. They don't let you out, there's just nowhere to go. So someone tonight joked about, I can't go over there at this time of the day or whatever. It's not a joke, it's real. And so. Putting units. In even on Foundry Street is going to impact at least my little area of the world. Way more than it can handle. And without people that monitor this, and I'm not talking about the town council or. But you know, the, the parking restrictions aren't monitored, how they park, is it monitored? Then I have a big. A huge concern, not just a little concern for that. Issue and I'd like to know, you know, what you think you can do for that. Then I hear over and over again that people are gonna come here and live on. This area and take the train to work and they're not gonna need two cars. Well, we've built over four hundred units on Foundry Street. They're right there at the train. I'd like to see a survey done. In those two complexes that now have people living in them and ask them, how many of you take the train to work? Five percent of you, fifty percent of you? And how many of you have only one car? Because I think some of this is trying to be sold as it's gonna cut down on traffic. And I really don't see that happening. It's the same with the bike path. Bike path on North Ave. I would love to know if anybody has monitored that since they increased the size of the sidewalk. Because you can't get down North Ave on Saturdays with the. Farmers market, which I a hundred percent, I go every week faithfully. But there's no way to park. The bike path is going to be wider. And now the driving lanes are going to be narrower. Mr. Chines claims that if the, the driving path is narrower at eleven feet. People are going to drive slower. Well, I want to know how you know that because on the highway, he told me that the lanes are eleven. Feet wide and do you see anyone driving the speed limit? So. You're throwing all these things, and I don't mean you. Collectively like it's your fault, so, but you're throwing out all these ideas. I understand supporting the state law that, you know, we have a. You know, I don't know, but. You've. We're creating more. Problems than solving. And. I just happen to live in that zone area. Which for me is more personal than it is for other areas in town. So I'd like somebody to come. To Cedar Street and sit on my front lawn and see what I'm talking about. I'm, I'll start coughing. And I don't mean to be sarcastic, but I really honestly don't think if you don't live in that area. You understand the impact we've already had from Foundry Street. I'm tired of being told that there is no traffic impact, there has been a study done and there is no traffic impact. How is there no traffic impact with four hundred more cars on the road if they only own one? And how down at Water Power Parkway, it's the same thing. How is there not going to be a traffic impact there? But they say there isn't, they say there's no traffic impact in a Han Street, but you're adding, as Mike said. Fifty percent more people that are living there. So who's doing the traffic study? I, I really don't know. So those are my concerns. I know they can't be addressed necessarily tonight or, but I think. That you have to understand. That these areas in the circles are the only areas that are going to face an impact in the whole town. No matter how hard we try, we can't equally spread it. Thank you.
I live in, I live up there in the same neighborhood and it just. Maybe all of them are aware of why I can't wait until next April.
Please come. I'm serious, really. Pardon me?
I have this next April.
I think his charm is up.
That's why my turn's up.
I, I.
All right, there you go.
No problem.
Hello neighbor, I'll be there.
Calm down and sit there. If you can get there.
My name is John Correo, the head of the league. I think when all the talk is done. Those three areas. Are going to be the only areas that need to be looked at. But. I think they need to be condensed greatly. They, they don't just go to the bare minimum. Of what the state requires. Outline it on, in the circle with a red line. Let the people see. What actually is gonna happen, what the, what the existing structures may look like. You know, ten years down the road, if they are bought out and the developer comes in and does his. Due diligence. I would focus more on Greenwood. Cause Greenwood needs more revitalization. Than any other part of town. Except for our downtown, of course, area. I would then focus more on. From the Galvin, maybe up to. Yale or Chestnut, I'm just trying to think of the names, Chestnut, Yale, Avon. The east side of North Ave, everything from North Ave to Main Street, from the Galvin up to. Boders and Bolts or something like that, that area there. I, I concentrate to revitalize, if we're gonna go through this. And we're gonna pass this, I would. Make sure we're concentrating our efforts to revitalize those areas that need it the most. Greenwood clearly does. And Main Street. You know, from the train tracks over to Main Street, Albion Street should be the gem of the city. It should look like downtown Melrose, in my opinion. There are beautiful homes on Avon and Chestnut and. I, I hope that they are maintained. But you could add a few units to it like they did to the house right behind the library. That White House looks fabulous with that little addition in the back, they got an extra unit into it and it's probably twenty-five years old now. But it's hidden and it looks nice. Those things can be done. So I'm, I'm trying to look at this from a positive point of view and saying. Maybe we can revitalize our little areas. Melrose Highlands, I mean, I grew up in that, in that circle and. I know the area well, it's limited. Area. But it could. Draw in some good developers to take some of those houses on Greenwood Street. And there's a little bit of land up the hill. Going towards Woodland, Woodland Ave, there's a big chunk of land there that could be developed. So I'm, I'm thinking. Greenwood becomes the primary, not there from Galvin to. Say Chestnut or the next couple of streets up. And then Foundry's gonna do its thing, Foundry is gonna be developed, we, we. We have less control over Foundry than we do. As a body, we have less control over Foundry than we do what Greenwood and. And Wakefield Station, that's my opinion.
Would you, would you consider using Foundry if you could get four hundred units there based on the theory that it's gonna be developed anyway?
Yes, Avon Supply, that's gonna, that's gonna be developed, both sides of the street. Where the, where too many pipe used to be, that's gonna be developed. There's no way you can sit on. That type of acreage and not develop.
And it sounds like you're looking for the fifty percent being around Wakefield Station, but shared, shared with both sides of the tribes.
Yes, I think, I think some of those, I think Albion Street should be looked at. We, we have old wood structures on Albion. That could be a beautifully developed. Brick front. Brick front. Uh, street lined with trees and whatever you want to call gas mantan books. That could be a real jewel to the city, to the town, let's say city.
Some people do.
The city for a long time, next door. I mean, if you think about Albion Street and the focal point of the train depot. And that downtown, it's a short walk. You know, it's a thousand foot walk and all the shops that could be there, I think that's, that's a diamond above.
Thank you. Thanks for the ideas. I do have a Eugenia on my.
I'm out.
Right here. Well said. Well, that, okay, I'm gonna go back a little and look at our neighboring towns. First of all, I'm not gonna vote you anyway. But our neighboring towns like Lynnfield and Stoneham are also in this whole place. Now Lynnfield is going to be building over six hundred units. In their town and the closest tea station naturally is Wakefield. Or Lynn. And for Stoneham, it's going to be Melrose or Wakefield. So has anybody thought about their parking or any of this situation when these people come? To town, thank you.
People come from Stoneham or. The other quick thing I wanted to say, two quick things, one, I do find that this state law is inherently. Unfair for a lot of reasons and one of them is because. The state didn't look at what the municipalities have been doing over the years and give them credit for that. And as we talked about earlier, the fact that we went from six point eight percent in twenty fifteen to eight point three four percent presently. We didn't get any credit from that from the state because this MBTA forty-eight three eight. Laws are one size fits all as far as the process is concerned. The simplistic approach I have to control over housing. Is the chair approach, because the chair has four legs. I would submit that this is one of the four legs, we have to decide if we want to comply with law or not. Another one of those is the change that was made under the special permit bylaw one ninety dash thirty-two in twenty fifteen that helped us. Have control over our housing. People may not agree with some of the stuff that was built on Foundry Street and whatnot, but we had control over that housing. To help us get to the eight point eight four percent, that's the second thing. The third leg, in my opinion, is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund was passed at town meeting a year ago. It's still in its infancy stage, but there is a board of trustees, they're currently meeting and they're looking at. What we can do as far as helping first time home buyers, renters. And potentially somewhere down the road years from now, build affordable housing perhaps for seniors and other folks in the community. And the last one is the forty B. And because we are not at ten percent. We have to look at forty B and see what we can do to protect ourselves from some of these developments that we don't think are good for the town. And that's why the initiative that's going on right now simultaneously with this MBTA. Quarter. Is the Housing Production Plan. Which right now residents are encouraged to apply to sit on the Housing Production Plan subcommittee. So that hopefully we can have a housing production plan, which the town did in twenty fifteen, twenty twenty. Because if you haven't approved Housing Production Plan by the state. And you can get it certified based on your subsidized housing inventory numbers. Then your zoning board repeal under Massachusetts law can deny forty B permits as not. I forget the exact term, but because they, they don't comport with what the town needs. But you need to have a certified housing production plan in order to do that. That's the fourth way. So that simplistic view of the chair is I see four legs in exerting control over housing. And that's what, what the town right now is trying to do simultaneously. Housing Production Plan, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, whether we want to comply with this. MBTA forty-eight and then the change we made nine years ago to our zoning. That's the way I look at control of our housing. Anything else for the first time?
Yes. This is, my name is Dennis Clary, I live at One Harvest Road. That's ninety-eight years. I'm not ninety-eight years old. My family has been there, my father and grandfather. This. This zoning law is, is aimed at communities that have snob zoning. Wake, Swamp Scott is already. In compliance because they don't have snob zoning. So what the, the state wants you to do is they want you make. Three percent of your land. Available. To build. A four family by right. Now you're all in a froth about this. But it's gonna change nothing. Nobody's gonna tear down houses to build four families. It's just not gonna happen. What I would suggest is that. That you make. As of right. Any rock that has been approved for a single or a two family. That you allow. A four family to be built. That way you won't have Nahann Street. Which is the state will issue the permit. You will spread it out all over town. You can always change it back once you reach. The ten percent. Which the state requires. And. But you may find out that you like it. You might like having your children live there. You might, you might like it. The state law, the state, there's no law that says we have to have zoning. There are five communities of, of the three hundred and fifty-one in the state that have no zoning. They have no zoning bylaws. And I think Edward might be one of them. But. There's. Right now, Wakefield requires. A hundred feet, a hundred feet of frontage. And state law requires. Twenty feet of frontage. Now to go to house. The, the minimum block requirement is ten thousand feet or eight thousand feet. The state law is two thousand square feet. So Wakefield is with this snob zoning is at four to five hundred percent. Of state law. So if we. You can still have approved lots, but just allow, spread it out. Allow. Four families on any approved lot. So. I've probably alienated everyone. But, but I. I reiterate that we have snob zoning here.
May I ask you what snob stands for? Is it the word snob itself or is it?
We have snob zoning here, but. The. This is. We have snob zoning here, but uh, the, this is directed at Wakefield. I mean, Swan Scott does not have snob zoning. And they are already in compliance, so they don't have to change anything. So we just have to relax as zoning. That's, that's the state. That, that's what the state wants us to do. Otherwise, we wind up with Nahann Street, which is abominating. You know, it, it's, but the state will issue a permit if we're not in compliance with the law. Thank you very much.
I'll go second time around, but this is.
Did you want to do the one online? You go back and forth.
No, no, uh, uh, everyone online is for the second time.
Okay, thank you. Marcy McCauley, thirty two Walden Road. Um, I want to thank you, Mike. You've been very gracious to be available for outreach. And when you ran for town council, one of my friends invited you to her home. So we, a lot of us could talk to you about the school because we have an interest in that. You graciously, graciously came and spoke for two hours. And um.
I got a brownie hoots.
Yeah, right? That's a very good brownie as well. And um, we didn't disagree on a new school. We disagreed on a, an almost three hundred million dollar school. We felt that a hundred and fifty million dollars was an ample amount to build a school. Um, so that said, the reason I bring it up is we have not even talked about. How much this new school is going to add to our taxes before any of this other stuff comes into play. And we have a very average home, and I would say that's probably about twenty five hundred additional taxes a year, is that correct?
For the new school?
For the new school.
On, on your, on.
On an average home.
I, I think twenty five hundred sounds a little bit high. I, I'd have to go. I think that's.
Looking at the math, I felt, I felt like I remember.
I thought the highest incentive was like fourteen hundred, but I'd have to back.
I think everybody knows that bill's coming.
Yeah.
If you don't know.
Yeah, my bill's coming.
I will say this, if there's more units built, that gets spread out, that bill gets spread out.
Well, that's, that's, that actually led to here because what I'm trying to understand is when you talk about math, you know, we were. Listening to someone saying the price of our, our taxes would come down if we built more, and I think you addressed that as well. But it does seem that we have a fixed amount of land and a fixed amount of schools, more or less. That there would have been some easing of, of the taxation, you know, in town, but then, but that hasn't been the case. So um, it's a concern that, you know, we, we're going to be taxed out of our homes, but another.
And it's not much, but we did have a tiny bit below two and a half this most recent year. Because we had enough cash to do it.
Thank you.
And in fact, the majority of the years over the last ten, so.
Yeah.
Uh, then we.
We've gone less than the full two and a half percent. We've gone less than the full two and a half percent.
Yeah, but two and a half percent as the pie keeps expanding, expanding, expanding. That's a lot more money.
Yes.
No, we're not disagreeing with that. We're just saying we have occasionally in number of years gone below two and a half.
We actually. Sixteen and twenty percent.
Two and a half plus year growth, you know, you wind up with, I've never had a two and a half percentage increase in my house. I get it. And the, and the tax bill is coming for the high school. You know, this is going to, this is going to, these are not going to be great times in terms of people being happy with their taxes.
Correct. And so I was concerned, um, you know, about that, but then I also am hearing, you know. You say, Bob, that you don't want to be the voice of the entire town. And that's why this has to be brought back and that we have to be um, cognizant that there are twenty eight, two thousand residents in this town. And uh, I'd like to bring up the November town meeting. When we had a small group of people there, uh, and the Superior Energy Code was passed. And there were several of us that got up for almost two hours and begged. And said, let's not make this decision when we've got just over two hundred people in this room representing this town. And I think forty seven was the passing, was the number of votes that made this pass. So it's a little concerning to me when I hear, but we got to, you know, keep pushing this because we want to take everyone's. Uh, opinion and, you know, and vote into consideration. Well, that didn't happen at that meeting. So I, I am concerned. I'm very concerned about the taxes and um. I don't think that complying with the state constantly taking away our zoning rights. Their, our zoning rights, and they're taking them. I don't agree with that. And at some point, we have to make a stand. Thank you for your, your work on this.
One thing to add and to kind of address some of your concerns and concerns that we heard, I go not just here, but previously, but concerns about taxes, me and Pat on tax. That's part of the reason why we're looking at mixed use. If you don't know commercial properties are taxed at a higher rate than residential.
Yeah.
And so by incorporating a commercial component into residential, it will ultimately have a harder pull or heavier. Um, higher taxes, it's, it's more complicated than that, but essentially they're going to be contributing more than just a residential building with. So that's part of the reason we're looking at fixed use and mixed use areas, just so you know.
Okay.
Could I ask you a question of the people in the room and the people in the virtual room? Are there any first time hands? We'd kind of like to give a first time hand a chance. Are, are we seeing anybody on there? Can we take this down a little?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, and if I missed this earlier, I apologize. If this gets pushed on us and we comply, can they come back five years from now and say, we changed that number of units? And now our burden of uh, resources by a police, T P W teachers, school rooms aren't big enough. Is there any way that once that number is met, they can't come back and say, you, we're kicking the football farther down the road?
Is it, is it, I think it was an old English uh, law case where the uh, statement was made that I'll use the proper gender. A person's property is not safe as long as the largest feature is in session. I mean.
So the answer is it could happen.
The answer is I think anything can happen, right?
So all this is.
I don't, I don't.
Speculatory as far as numbers, what's going to happen.
I don't know. We could change this if we didn't like it a few years down the road either. I think once we like this in as a, as a district, it's going to be a district. Like, you know, forty B's been forever. The district will probably be forever as well. Which is why I think we want to be, you know, we're trying to be careful. Some of us try to propose something somewhat carefully.
I would hope within five years we're at ten percent as well, since we're almost at ninety percent.
With the Housing Production Plan.
By then they'll want fifteen.
That, that's what I'm saying. Can they come and change that number after you met this number?
So one thing to clarify.
Well, the ten percent hasn't changed in decades for forty B. That particular.
Nobody gets.
Right, yeah, seventy two.
Once they do.
However, that, whether the number not can change or not, our, our zoning is still going to be. It, it shouldn't get passed, should something get passed, that would still be codified. They could potentially change something, but we would still have whatever our existing zoning is. If we're required to meet something. It would have to go through some sort of process. They can't, couldn't just arbitrarily sign a piece of paper and slide it under.
But they could come back and say, well, we're now going to take away that funding for a new school you want to build or a fire truck you guys need help buying. Or road instruction.
Yeah, so the new school would not be.
No, I'm saying that, I'm saying in a hypothetical sense going forward, not to do what's going, what's going on now, but I believe to your point earlier. We don't have concrete answers to a lot of stuff. I think that's what everyone's really concerned about here because. You're doing the best you can, but you're not getting an honest answer that you can give us that we feel comfortable with. I don't think anyone wants to find out after this gets. You know, accomplished or whatever. At some point, they're not going to say, well, this doesn't solve the state's desire for that number. All of a sudden, wait till we want you to put this many more units in, and now traffic goes up, parking goes up. It, it, everything that's been said here, I, I think that's just going to get compounded again unless we really have some. Actual information that people can make a sound decision all the way around on whatever side of this issue you may or may not be on.
And on the local level, there's only so much of that answer we can give you because we're not the ones making those regulations.
Could you guys bring someone in from the state that would have to sit here in front of the people of this town and provide those answers?
It's, it's voted in, so the E O H L C, the, the department that's effectively dealing with a lot of this, uh, M B T A communities. Excuse me, regulations, as well as part of the grants. Um, they're still not going to have those answers explicitly because they are not the ones making the regulations and the law themselves. They're tra, they're tasked with.
Okay, so the person that you're speaking of, can they come then do that? Because it's, it's obviously. Yeah, so could our representatives have to come here and answer for this? We voted in?
I, I know that folks in Green and Power today have invited them at various times, uh. I haven't seen them attend, but I don't know that we could, you know, force them to come. We could ask, we could ask, uh, obviously these meetings are, are, you know, awesome, pretty tough questions and maybe they come or maybe they wouldn't. I don't know.
Yeah, it's just like I said, it's just people. I understand what you guys are doing. You're trying to make.
You're saying the search is uncertainty, right? I mean, I, I was part of a parents' movement trying to rebuild the government earlier than Tom was bringing it to. And we would have got more state aid and we would have been in lower costs, of course, because five or ten years later, it's possible. And the state, you know, participation and going down with it. So that's to your point. I mean, things do change over time. Might, might there be less money available to us for grants? Might there be changes in law? Yeah, but you know, you can't control that. Um, I'm terribly concerned about things changing markedly. I'm more concerned that they stay the same, especially with forty B because we haven't been able to meet it. In, in forty years, we're making progress, but everything pulls against everything else. If, if we have no affordability in the last plan and it got voted in for market rate units under forty A section three A. That actually changes our forty B equipment. Because we get more market rate units and less S H I, which is the modern income units, subsidized housing units. That's a huge number. They change it every ten years. They allow us to add to the S H I units during the course of decade. And then after the census comes out, add all those other units that we built, probably to the denominator. So we could go from ten point two percent back to eighty percent. That's why we always have to be cognizant. This is a lot of moving pieces to this. We have to be cognizant of friendly four units. Because say, what do you consider a friendly forty B? Well, the reason is because we need the forty B units. And if we can put it in a place where it's not as much of an impact, like not a hundred units on Nahann Street. We're going to be looking at a lot more friendly from the town law. Right? We dropped behind the Dunkin' Donuts out, you know, by one twenty eight. I'm going to be a little more friendly to that forty B so we can get twenty four or thirty six units. In a situation that's not going to be as much of an impact. Just saying, I mean, there's a lot of.
Like you say, no one has the ability to say, you've met your number and that number's going to change going farther down the road. No one has that answer. No, because you could have new legislatures that we don't know, so.
So I just wanted to um, get back to, so forty B has changed number of times over this time. They can change. The actual paragraph to this law, the actual law itself, there's only three paragraphs. But the guidelines that were developed after the law passed is twenty, thirty pages worth of stuff. That's already changed. Initially, they said, if you don't do this, you're going to lose these grants. Then town said, well. Town said, well, we don't take those grants, so what are we going to do? And they said, well, all right, we're going to lose these ones.
Oh, you're talking about forty eight, not forty. Okay, all right. I'm saying, how did I miss this forty?
Initially, you said, if you don't do it, you're going to lose. Then they said, well, okay, well, now you're going to lose these. And then they said, well, okay, if you don't do it, now we're going to sue you. Right? So this is already changed. And, and getting back to earlier when I said that the affordability and fronts, I just looked at their website. It, it said no more than ten percent, not less than eighty percent of the area media income.
Right. And so what that means is that we couldn't have it. Because some other municipalities have a requirement to meet uh, to provide like ten percent at sixty percent A M I. That's what they're talking about. So it, it would be the same as our existing inclusionary zoning, which is at eighty percent.
Eighty percent or below. This says that it can be not less than eighty.
That means that the requirement, so we cannot require a developer to provide a unit at sixty percent A M I. It has to be at eighty percent or higher. So you can do eighty percent A M I, A M I, ninety percent A M I, hundred percent A M I. But you cannot do sixty percent A M I without doing an economic feasibility analysis. You can technically have it.
Okay, it, it's just, it was, it was.
It's confusing. Totally understandable. That's why I was on a call with them today.
So what this state is saying is that that, that opens that up to more people. So eighty percent, seventy, they're all.
The questions I had, the things I've read earlier, all of them that's section four of this, if you want to look, other one was with energy, is in that section four as well.
Yeah, I have everything.
With energy. And then also, there was another thing that I noticed in there, uh, that I found interesting was about, uh, which I just saw, which is on multi-use. And it says that uh, mixed use projects may be allowed as of right in multi-family zoning districts. As long as multi-family housing is separately allowed as of right. So I'm reading that as a, you sell like, say Albion Street as a right. But separately, as long as multi-family housing is separately allowed as a right. So if the Carly is a business. And they wanted to, it's just great, but also if they want to tear that business down and do it as all single fam, uh, uh, as all residential. They could do that as a right. And then you've lost that residential, then you've lost that business income, the business tax rate. Now it's all residential tax rate. So we, we need to.
Yes and no.
Yeah, there's a caveat.
What you're talking about is true. However, there is a, this is, this is where I said, there's a lot more weeds and nuances to it than, than what I talked about here. Because this is a very preliminary thing. There is a category or um. Designation that you can put on certain districts. You have to get a group from the state that are called mandatory mixed use. So that if somebody builds something, there's, they have to do first floor commercial or office space. And then they can be residential above. Already been in touch with them um, regarding North Ave, Albion, Main Street.
I was just saying, so.
Looking at some different areas.
But as this reads, it says zoning will not be deemed compliant on section three A, and that's in that section.
Right.
Saying that.
And that's, that's.
These are the guidelines.
I, I understand that and I've read the guidelines. The mandatory mixed use component came out, I believe, slightly later than the original guidelines. It was an addition. The mandatory mixed use component is something that you have to have approval from the state for. So most of what the guidelines talk about, especially with even the affordability component, are things you can do without having to have additional reviews um, or additional documents. Um, studies, et cetera, analyses done. And in order to do a mandatory mixed use, you have to have a designated area, send the map into the state. Explain what this existing area is because they don't know every single, every single place and what our town looks like. And so we showed them, hey, these are existing neighborhood commercial areas. We don't want that first floor to come offline. We want it to maintain the existing commercial use or office use or whatever it is that's on the first floor. So that when you're walking in these commercial corridor areas, these neighborhood commercial areas, that they are still maintaining that same character at the existing area. And to be able to have the option for residential above it, uh, some of them on Albion Street, on Main Street, and I'm not sure about. North Ave off the top of my head, but I know that some of them, it's not every building that's mixed use, but there are ones that currently exist. And so we would like to maintain uh, by having a mandatory mixed use district. The commercial corridor areas.
Because I agree with you, although I am not in favor of this at all. I do agree that I would like to see more residential mixed use in town. Because I see it as a waste of space sometimes, it's a bill unoccupied on second floor is really good.
And remember, of course, it doesn't turn all evils because you're going to have some tenant that says my cost is going up because now it's a new building, right? But if we're. There are a lot of buildings. You know, at that point, everything is wonderful in Melrose, but you know, there are a lot of businesses that are doing quite well.
But if we're going through all this effort to, to, to carve in mixed use into this specifically. I just want to make sure, because as I'm reading this, that what you're telling me is different than what I'm actually reading. Is that this, they could tear down that business and put on residential.
That's why we're doing this. That's why we're doing this.
Because we're, you know, we haven't planned yet.
That's, that's also part of why Alkin, North Ave and Main Street were not included in the last iteration. If you actually look at the map. Along the edges, they weren't included because the mandatory mixed use component was not uh, I think at the very beginning of the meetings, it wasn't released by the state. And then it didn't end up getting included because it's not the package plan.
Do you want to point out that we feel bylaws, our town charter is based on. Although we got put into effect in nineteen sixty seven, I believe, in Massachusetts, one point something million to two hundred thousand. It took the power away from the state and specifically one of the things was local zoning. And put that back to the towns that gave the towns the power to do their own local zoning. The, the preamble to our charter is that we, the people Wakefield, in order to reestablish our individual sovereignty. With respect to the conduct of our local government and to take the fullest advantage of inherent, fullest advantages inherent to a homewill amendment to the constitution of Homewill. To hereby adopt the following homewill charter to town Wakefield. So the state, the, the whole reason the state has kicked us back to all the towns and cities that vote on it. It's because the state can't tell us what to do with zoning, right? We have to vote ourselves into it. So the fact that we pushed this off at the last town meeting actually saved us because in October, if the Massachusetts Supreme Court says in the town of Milton. You're all good. The state is wrong. They can't do this. If we had voted ourselves into. If we had voted ourselves into this, we would still be locked into this program because we voted ourselves into it.
But if we voted ourselves into it, as you stated, November town meeting.
Right.
There'll still be a couple of months before the A G, you know, approves the bylaw. But we still may not have a decision. I've been involved in litigation, you can go in for a non.
I'm just saying that we, we have a really good standing with Home Rule. Home Rule gives us a lot of power. And that we, we should.
I guess I'm just not feeling the same power you are.
Yeah, like, you know, it's just, it's what, it's what we have, when we have the gumption as a town, it just say, I know, sir, I'm gonna need this, where you guys know.
And one thing to keep in mind with, um, any decision that does come up in October, it's likely to be appealed by either side. Uh, so we're not going to have an actual proposition likely in October.
I don't wanna, we don't wanna kind of go quickly into the law, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yeah. So I'm sorry, but. I just don't see how you can even present this. Given what we see. So in other words, my frustration is that one of the roads in this town. Exceeding capacity, when is it, one of the, the train station exceeding capacity, when is the infrastructure? When I come, I come down, um, Main Street and the commons on my right, there's a light there to go to Church Street. There's twelve cars before the light and the cars are bumper to bumper all the way to North Avenue. So when is traffic to the point where it's not tolerable anymore? I come down, um, ma- get off the exit on one twenty eight ninety five, route twenty eight Main Street, by the ninety nine. There's twelve cars there. You take a left, the cars are backed up all the way. To the stop sign on Prospect. And then I see the cars, there gotta be thirty cars ahead of me. And then I see cars going through the stop sign. And on the other side of the intersection, they're backed up, which means they're backed up all the way to North Avenue.
Try to process street when somebody's taking over.
Right, but this is all, all I'm saying, all I'm saying is, and I don't mean to be, you know.
I run that link every day, I go down there every day.
Okay, okay.
Which is, the moratorium is probably the only answer.
Exactly, exactly. So, but can I just, can I complete the thought, please? So I mean. I mean, so adding units isn't, forty Bs, adding units, supply and demand has nothing to do with this housing market. It's not a free open market, it's all subsidized back by the government. Otherwise, when COVID hit, everybody would have lost their house, people would have stopped paying rent. The city and towns, the state paid their rent for them, okay? It's not an open market, supply and demand does not apply. If it did, all this building in this town would mean the prices would be lower. At the hearing, at the, at the meeting, one woman said, oh, I moved, I graduated from Brookline, I couldn't afford to move back there. I graduated Belmont in nineteen seventy nine, I couldn't afford to move back there after college. So the argument that your kids can't live here, that's, that's not, it doesn't have any weight. The supply and demand, affordable housing has no weight. The fact that for the last thirty years, they've been retailing the first floor apartments around the T station. Because nobody's gonna drive a car anymore. Carries no weight, it's a false premise, but you keep coming with the M B T A. Which has proved to be so inefficient, so overcapacity, so underwater. That's the, this is the solution, more housing relying on the M B T A. Is you bang, you can bang the drum for thirty or forty years, but I mean, at some point, you gotta say, it's not working and it's not gonna help. So like, all I'm saying is, my frustration is, if we are capa- capacity now. Which I think we are, what's it gonna be like after Foundry Street's build out, Nahand Street? I haven't dropped my kids off for high school for ten, twelve years. I called the police department when I draw, when I was driving my youngest to high school, you could not get through the intersection. I said, you're gonna have two or three cops down here, this is twelve years ago. Oh, no, uh, we decided that doesn't work. I said, well, you got one cop on the, standing on the sidewalk. I said, you can't get to the high school from Nahand Street. This is twelve years ago. So I mean, am I, I mean. Am I, is nobody seeing what I'm seeing in this town?
I think everybody's seeing it.
Well, then why would you even present this?
People from the hood streets, send me on this phone. It's like seven o'clock in the morning.
But then, the fact that, I'm, I'm sorry, but you keep, why are we continuing to rely on the same things to solve problems when it's not working?
You've said so many times tonight that you don't like anything about this law. You said it many times. And then you said, I hope it passes in November. So I'm just trying to understand.
A different, a different type of plan, a, a different type of plan. That stays out of the residential, it spreads, which is what we heard from, not everybody, I was. What we heard from a lot of people was, you know, and I'm the one that brought it up, why aren't we doing any Greenwood, right? Not to pick on Greenwood, but to share the wealth or the pain. You know, if we move it in more into the commercial, if we move it into the, you know, the, the, um, the mixed use. If we move a lot of it out of the residential, I'm not saying cars won't come. I'm not saying we won't have traffic, but I'm saying we consider it our duty to provide a different plan to town meeting. And people can vote it up or vote it down. Get your vote out and vote it down and you win. It's pretty damn simple.
See, when I read the survey, I thought, what a shame. Because now what you've done by putting that out there with those lists, you want it here, you want it there, you want it there, well, West Side. It's gonna say, put it in Greenwood. Greenwood's gonna say, put it in West Side. But people near Foundry Street are gonna say, we don't want it here, get it over Salem Street.
And we will have, but, but, Mrs. Cox, we're gonna have to take all that into account, come up with a plan. No matter what we do, somebody's gonna be unhappy. In fact, maybe everybody's gonna be unhappy, right?
Well, sometimes we just have to say no. Then why did you brought up, the Baker's administration brought us all this crap? Because, you know, I think this red versus blue nonsense has just gotta go. We have to take care of each other in our communities. And, uh, you know, you wanna look at one of Baker's fans, look at Sean O'Connell and go to O C P F. And look how many developers donated ten thousand dollars to her inauguration ball. Why do you think you give somebody ten thousand dollars for a ball? Like, come on.
Whether it was Pro Builder or whether it was others who were, oh my gosh, this is just great for housing. Whatever, it would, it flew through, the town administration will say to you that, as municipal was against it. It was kind of an attachment to a bill at the last minute or whatever. These things happen in legislatures. And we are left to deal with it. We are left to deal with it to, not please, but you know, resources, town resources. But at our time, you know, we volunteer, but, you know, that we have to, you know, have our paid people doing so much work on this too. Uh, it, it, I don't like the law, I told him that two years ago, but kinda saddled with it and coming up with a final plan and it's the final time. If this one doesn't pass.
Let's, this gentleman way in the back here, first time. I'm Charles Elliott, I live, I live on, uh, Green Street in, in Greenwood. And I don't understand why we have like this idea that because a lot of people don't like that we're doing this, we shouldn't. Have, you know, like, like a meeting like this and discuss it. As a proposition, you should have that option of choice, even if you disagree with it. I don't believe you should take that away from someone. Uh, also, there was the, my, my personal belief, uh, is, I, I know some people disagreed with the idea of developing Greenwood. I really think that it does need revitalization. I know people disagree with that, but a lot of the area really. Like you, you walk through it and it's, you feel comfortable there, but a lot of it seems like it could be better. And I don't understand the idea of not making it better. I feel like that should be the goal and I, and I just. I don't, I feel, but primarily, I feel or understand why people don't like the idea of discussing it. Because I feel like discussing it is the only way anything gets, it doesn't guarantee that anything's gonna get passed. We just need to have a discussion, that's all that needs to be done.
Well, town meeting is where we do, like, just like, and I agree with it, and town meeting is where, you know, many folks have said to me over the years. When we had a charter commission years ago, I didn't vote for open town meeting, I meant it. The greatest form of democracy, I didn't vote for, for representative town meeting. But we have what we have and that legislative body makes the final decisions after this kind of debate. And, you know, let me tell you something about town meeting, I hear the term stacking. You know what stacking town meetings is? Depends on whether you win or lose. The other side has more votes than you, they stack town meeting. So, so stack it if you wanna win.
Can you just explain if we could, I don't mean to, the re- revitalization, how revitalization is gonna work in this neighborhood? If they build, convert singles to four, three and four families?
I'm not looking for three, singles to three and four families, A. B, there's a, I found a twenty year old planning document for this town online.
Yeah.
That said, merchants in Greenwood are feeling very ignored. There's all this stuff we gotta do in Greenwood. As I've said, I go on it when I.
I understand that, but how does the M B T A community zoning gonna help revitalize an area? If it's limited to special permitting to increase the number of units in a given. Location, how does that increase the downtown, how does it increase the downtown area, improve it?
Well, let's, let's talk about Greenwood for a minute, that's what you're asking me about. There are thirty seven commercial acres and we take a piece of that. And we say you can do larger buildings there, which you, by the way, there is a special permit district right now around Foundry Street and around Greenwood. What's happening in Greenwood? Nothing. What's happening by Wakefield Station? Lots. If we create under forty eight, in terms of being compliant with them. A, a rule that says within these certain amount of acres, you can as a matter of right do those taller buildings. It may or may not come, but could it serve the revitalization of Greenwood? Yeah, if a builder goes in and buys enough land and puts up those buildings, it'll, it'll serve to revitalize Greenwood, yes.
So part of that, part of what he's alluding to is that there would not be a special permit process. There would be criteria that need to be met within the zoning code, but there wouldn't be a special permit process. Which creates less barriers for developers and reduces their costs. Now, there are a variety of different ways our zoning overlay by law for M B T A, should one get passed. Would be able to regulate what it is that we wanna see there. However, the incentives towards revitalization would be that reduced cost, reduced timeline. Because I, I don't know if you've ever looked at the cost of hiring an attorney, paying for a special permit. In addition to, you have plans drawn in order to go for a lot of that, even preliminary plans for preliminary decision. There's a, a, a large cost that's associated with that, which for a developer, it's a, it's a gamble. Because they may not get approved, they may get approved, they may get approved something very restricted, they don't know what they're getting at. Um, or what they're going to get from that. So part of what M B T A communities does have the potential of doing is. Opening up some of those doors by reducing some of those barriers for a developer to come in. It is still incredibly expensive to do new construction. I don't know if you've looked at the price for building a single family house in Massachusetts right now, but it's.
Pretty prohibitive.
It, it's a, a twenty four hundred square foot house, your average cost, not including utilities, not including property, is over eight hundred thousand dollars. Just at a very bare bones house, not, you know, your, your fancy finishes or anything. Um, and that's a, twenty four hundred is, I think, fairly average. So once you add in the cost of your property and tying into utilities and then potentially any other components, like drainage. Uh, stormwater stuff, uh, just the cost can go up higher. It can be even worse with multi-family, meaning that there are additional reviews and components that need to happen. And especially with a mixed use building. So by reducing some of those barriers, not all of them. Because of course, there's still going to be regulations, you can help to incentivize people to redevelop an area. So that's Greenwood.
Excuse me, this, you had your hand up way in the back here.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I think whether a person can afford to move here or not. Once a person does move here, they want to have full ownership of their home and their property. And I think by extending the zoning, it's essentially just expanding the rights to what you can do on your own property. So those that own, nobody's knocking your house down, like you just have more right to keep it as it is if you want. And then also, I hear a lot of concerns about the town, I fully agree. I think some traffic studies would be great. Gets better road infrastructure, gets better buildings, better businesses, improvements to the schools and more money into the schools. And essentially, it's just not gonna happen, whether it comes from, whether that money comes from the state or whether it comes from taxes. I don't really see anybody putting out big, uh, big, uh, charity money toward these things. So it's either gonna come forced from our taxes or we're gonna get it some other way. Thank you.
What was your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Emily from Main Street.
All right, I have two more people online that are for the second time, is that okay? We'll take one of them. Go, uh, Tori Olivera. It on you.
Hi, um, I'd just like to point out a couple of things after listening to everyone. Um, we were told when all of a sudden development was proposed here in town. Not to worry, it would drive our, uh, tax rates down. Well, I concur with what a lot of people said. Um, every year just about, the town council has voted to the maximum of two and a half percent. So all of this development that's been going on has not driven down our taxes. And, um, secondly, I really worry about our planning board. It's a volunteer, um, committee. And I am so impressed between them and the zoning board. The effort that they put in, and this is just gonna be humongous, you know, for them to handle. And then, um, I also wanna mention, and I know Sam was thinking about reconfiguring the Wakefield Station section. To shift it more to the east side. Um, I really think we need equity around this and we really need to share the burden of this overlay. And I don't think when this comes to a vote, um, a lot of people are gonna be happy about. The east side bearing, you know, more, more of the bu- burden around that. And I understand we wanna revitalize the downtown. But it should be within our hands to do and we should determine that and we have the tools to do that. Without, um, relying on some sort of, um, an overlay in this other amorphous thing. And, um, and then lastly, I just wanna mention, you know, that, uh, representatives vote this in. And it's unelected bureaucrats sitting behind a desk that, um, decide the guidelines and the regulations. And I think that is so totally unfair. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Uh, the city of Boston, except from forty eight, is, is the reason.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know either.
I know they have.
It's a good, good, good call for your state representatives.
Yeah, they have a number of different, different initiatives they're working on. I believe that there's a, a recent, um. Push for them to consider, uh, supporting conversion of their empty commercial spaces into residential. But I don't know specifically why they're excluded.
City of Boston has their own separate.
Yeah. Zoning, yeah, that's the rest of probably why.
They have separate zoning, that's the rest. It's a special, but there's like, maybe there's.
You think people are taking the train, going anywhere to Boston, but Boston runs with Donalds.
All right, I got one more online, Julie Scott.
Hi again, uh, just wanted to remind Sam that much of Wakefield's historic district is on the east side of North Avenue. So if you could look into that. Couple other comments after having listened tonight. This mandate requires the fifteen units per square area that is a density that is much more than what most towns permit. As we continue to increase traffic and density and, and, and pressure on schools, I keep hearing these key words. Um, we have to keep reminding ourselves that that ten percent target that we keep aiming for is just going to be a target that keeps on moving away from us. Um, a lot of Massachusetts residents are leaving in droves. That means tax revenue will continue to go down and promises of so many different ways that they'll be helping communities execute this mandate may be taken away from us. A headline today in our newspaper in Boston was, quote, could sink the, um, Commonwealth financially? It's about the emergency shelters costing up to a bit, five, a few billion dollars. We're heading toward an economic crisis and I'm concerned about that. Accessory dwelling units have not been talked about enough tonight. Those will be allowed all across our town. If, when we wait until after December thirty first, that's when the town's gonna unroll a lot of information about the accessory dwelling unit law. Um, you could have a garage or a building in your backyard and you can convert it basically to have up to three people living in it. That's going to happen in every neighborhood in Wakefield. So stop just thinking about this M B T A three A thing. Think about all the development we see and add on to that, every neighborhood, every street. Will be having other accessory dwellings added to it. We need to include the traffic advisory committee and maybe even the school superintendent. At these meetings, I've got some real concerns. Accessory units will be all over town. Those people will not be walking to the train. They might be living in a unit on Montrose Avenue. Boston, our leaders, our state leaders, always think of traffic and transportation, north and south, into Boston, out of Boston. If you're on the south shore, you can go from the south shore into Boston. Some people, many people, wo- work east and west of where they live. If you work in Wakefield, nobody ever talks about seeking transportation from the state that goes east and west. If you work in Wakefield, nobody ever talks about seeking transportation from the state that goes east and west. I know lots of people who work in Burlington and Waltham, they have to drive. I know lots of people who work at the hospitals in Dandras and Beverly, they have to drive. So this is not meeting the needs of the people who do not work in Boston. And we all see Main Street parking spaces in Greenwood empty near the train stations because a lot of people aren't working in Boston anymore. I'm concerned that renters do not pay property taxes. When we have higher density, more people living here, that's great for them. They draw on all of our resources, but they're not paying property taxes. The, the owner of the houses, but not the renters. So the accessory unit dwelling issue is gonna clobber a lot of communities. We need to talk about that at every upcoming meeting. It is not just the MBTA three A Communities Act that we need to concern ourselves with. Both of these issues are intertwined and interconnected and we all have to keep both of these in our heads as we move forward. Thank you.
So you got, anybody else in the room?
That's, that's a, it's part of the state housing bond bill, I believe. It is not anything the town is doing. And again, it's something that I would suggest you talk to your state representatives. But I think it is.
It has, one, one quick thing to add. If anybody is curious about, again, curious about the density in your area, we already have similar density to what they're asking in certain areas of Wakefield. If you pull up this whole map, you can see the darker density, that is actually more dense than what MBTA communities. Uh, the darkest color here than what MBTA communities is mandating as their minimum. So feel free to, to look at other areas around.
I just wanted to say to the two of you, so know that you're all in here for the reasons. Thank you very much, because I appreciate you putting the time and taking the time out of your daily lives to do all this because I know it takes a lot, you know, the two of you get paid to do this.
But we don't get overtime.
I know that, the salary is pretty good.
That's right.
I appreciate the forum, I appreciate that, I'm, I'm staunchly against this, but I appreciate the fact that they've had these forums to come here, even for me to discuss my dismay at some of this stuff. I, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask one question. How are you going to tally the written surveys? It's not like in school, you run it through that machine to check the door.
I don't, I don't think that goes in. I don't think Betsy Schirr is gonna do it for us.
I manually add every single one of them. I note the date that it was received, I initial next to it and I note where I picked it up from. And then by the time I have, once I get over there, I highlight it and then it goes in my drawer. So they're all safe, they're not recycled or thrown away or anything, so that they can be properly tabulated. And then the software that we have that does the survey online actually notes which day and time each one of them were added. And so all of that can be cross referenced.
How many have you got so far?
Over seven hundred.
The only other thing I want to say to this gentleman, the town has grants, right Steve? For businesses that wanna get awnings, fix their shops up.
Yeah, that's actually, the town council made a million dollars worth of federal funds available.
So if you know a business down there, they can check out into it and see what they can get to help spruce up their shop and make it more better.
I was more concerned, yeah, townwide mixed use. I think, and I think there's about fifteen or sixteen businesses that have already kind of started the process. It's a great process.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice to see things looking. Anybody else? Right then, I, nobody else online, scale. Public forum meeting closed at eight fifty eight PM. Thank you all for coming, remote and thanks.